Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for July 25, 2017. We'll begin with a special order calendar. Decision items, item number one, 30201BZ, 2519, 2525, Preston Avenue, The Bronx.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chair Perlmutter, Ali Carreri for Greenberg Charred.
I need to reopen this if you're going to speak.
Understood.
So for motion to reopen.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Artley Brown?
Aye.
We were at the review session yesterday. We were closed, but there were a few questions remaining on the application. We submitted revised application materials yesterday in hopes of addressing those questions, but I'm happy to speak more to them today. I think the first question that I heard was that more information was requested on the material of the screen fence located between the parking and the landscaped area. We updated the site plan and the first floor plan to reflect that it would be a metal screen fence. We haven't fully designed the fence yet. It's planned to be a custom fence, probably laser cut, and would be painted. The next item of note was that the Commissioners confirmed that we couldn't remove the term of years from the variance. We did remove the references to that in our statement of facts that we submitted. There was a question about how monthly parkers, particularly the off-site parkers, would have access to the facility. I think we addressed this on the record last hearing, but we also did update our statement of facts for this submission to reflect that the electronic device that the monthly parkers would be assigned would have the ability to raise the gate at the entryway so that they could access the facility.
So it's a 24-hour key card?
Correct.
But there's an attendant?
Exactly. The daily parkers, the hours of operation are essentially just for the daily parkers and the attendant that would ensure that the daily parkers are accessory parkers. There was also a question about whether the parking would be self-parking or valet. It would be an entirely self-parking facility. There are a few tandem spaces. Those would be used by monthly parkers and distributed basically within an office, and we assume that they would work out a system of how they would park those cars, and our statement of facts reflects that. I think another question was essentially how the pedestrians from the parking garage would exit the facility and enter the facility, given the position of the reservoir spaces. To clarify, we don't think the reservoir space, at any given time, the reservoir spaces would be only temporarily occupied. They won't be striped spaces. They won't be indicated as spaces. It's just shown on the plans to indicate that there is an area for queuing off-street so that, you know, it doesn't contribute to congestion on the street. Regardless, we have added onto the plans a striped pathway for pedestrians along the right side of the, I guess it's kind of the north side of the parking facility that would indicate to drivers that they wouldn't be allowed to park or idle there for any substantial period of time. And then the final comment that I had was that you wanted to make sure the zoning chart got revised to reflect any changes. So we did revise both the zoning chart in the zoning sheet and the BSA zoning analysis chart and submitted those yesterday.
Right. And then the only other thing was you revised the plan to show the planting that goes along the entire perimeter there?
Correct, yeah.
Which is a big improvement, I think. So, okay, great. So having opened this, I need to ask about speakers. Are there any speakers? Okay. So then, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Artley Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition that I talked about yesterday, that this application is contingent on the building being constructed as income-restricted housing for which no parking is required, since the parking provided here is accessory to an off-site commercial use granted under BSA calendar number 302-01-BZ, and that monthly parkers from the off-site commercial use shall have 24-hour access to the parking area via key card. Right? Okay. So on that motion, motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Artley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Continued hearing items, item number two, 125979BZ, 29 West 26th Street, Manhattan.
Good morning. Fan Baton from Sheldon Lobell's office for the applicant. We respectfully withdrew this application. The owner had understood that all floors other than the sixth floor were under law board jurisdiction and had decided to keep the sixth floor as commercial use, as it's currently an office, and understands that its risk needs to apply for new variance if they want to do residential in the future.
Great. Okay. So then for a motion to withdraw.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Artley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number three, 23484BZ, 107682 Forest Avenue, Staten Island.
Good morning, Madam Chairman. Commissioners Robert Schuster. In response to the comments at yesterday's executive review session, a total of 31 photographs, new photographs, were submitted at the time. Photos 1 through 14 was a duplicate of the same orientation on the previous submissions. Photographs 15 through 31 were actually in greater detail on some of the things that the board had requested. What I would like to do is submit an explanation of each photograph, and I would also like to submit a revised site plan that will indicate the exact location of photos 15 through 31.
So 15 through 31 are the new sets?
That's correct. That's brand-new. Well, they're all current, 1 through 31. They were all taken at the same time. Photos 1 through 14 is the same orientation as previously submitted photographs.
I see. Yeah. I mean, it was possible comparing old to new to figure out where you were for most of it. I guess some of it is the questions about the condition of the site still in spite of those photographs. So you want to speak to those?
Yes, I do. I apologize about the confusion, but I will certainly correct that in a way of a revised site plan on photo explanation. Regarding photo number 17, for some reason, we did miss the access gate along the rear of the property which leads from the existing kitchen, and that's the access that the kitchen staff used to remove debris and refuge back to the refuge containers. Now, what you saw in that photograph was a small amount of cardboard on the ground, and if you also noticed, a shopping cart where they actually reel the debris, or refuge, to the dumpsters. That area is not being used for storage. It might have been just a temporary thing, you know, before they got that into the actual refuge containers. I might also add that the owner of the property, when he did look at the condition of that alleyway, the shrubs were over eight feet high, half of which were bare at the bottom, so he voluntarily replanted that entire area along that alleyway. So those are all newly planted shrubs, which were not requested by the board, but he felt since he had his landscaper, he did that as well.
Okay.
In response to question about photograph number 12, there is a tiny little fence that does appear to be leaning, so we will address that and correct that. Madam Chair, you had said something about using a common post. The problem with that is, is that that fence that you see on that very small retaining wall is not my client's fence. It's the residential property owner's fence. So we will get as close to him as we possibly can without touching his fence, which was actually a new fence as well. So we'll clean up that little situation.
And then the gate that's on the return?
Yes. We're going to take a hard look at that and see if I can pretty that up a little bit.
Not a little. It looks terrible.
Okay. My client's running out of money. He's doing the best he can with what little resources that he has, but we'll address that.
Understood, but maintenance of the site is part of the deal here, right?
I understand. I understand.
Okay.
Regarding photo number four, I will see to it that those shrubs, the weeds through the fence area are removed. We've just had so much rain at his landscaping.
I guess I'm confused about that photo, because the photo, I don't know what number that one was, the one that has all of the shrubs that are planted, that you said newly planted, and then there's this tree. So where does that tree, it's happening behind us? I think that's one of those Adelanta trees.
That tree is on my client's property.
Okay, so that's still there?
Yes, it is.
It's not, it seems like, it just seemed like it was in contradiction to the other photo that shows all those little shrubs all neatly in a row.
The shrubs start right after the tree.
Oh.
So he didn't want to remove the tree.
I see.
But we will certainly see to it that he trims that back.
Okay.
So that we take care of. The big issue about the paint color of the side of the building, at the time, when my client experienced graffiti, the Stylone Borough President's office has a graffiti removal program on which he took advantage of. Unbeknownst to him, they have only one color in their palette, and unfortunately, he didn't know that at the time. He took them up on the offer, and this is what we see now. I mean, graffiti is gone. Would it be his color of choice? Obviously not. But to repaint the entire facade of the building is certainly a hardship for him.
It's like, we're talking about a can of paint that costs $12?
Well...
And a paintbrush, and a roll.
Let me discuss that.
You know, you go to the store and you buy a can of paint, and then one of the guys who works for you gets there and schmears. I mean, that's what we're really talking about, right?
I'll have a conversation with my client. But that's the truth of the matter.
Yeah, I understand.
He did not have a choice.
We'll get in touch with the Borough President and tell him that they need to get some more colors.
Okay. Regarding the photograph number 29, there is an existing tiny step from the city sidewalk into the store. That's been there since 1984. What we did voluntarily was we created a handicap-accessible parking space, which the last two applications did not have. So he made an intent to be as handicapped accessible as he could. To get that step removed is a major undertaking and also would require a ramp in the city sidewalk area, so we would hope that he...
So what happens then when a person in a wheelchair comes?
Well, it's like many other situations. We're not required by the ADA. We're required to make reasonable accommodation?
Right.
Which he felt that he did by offering to provide that handicap parking space.
That's the parking. Now you're in the parking.
I know.
Now you're out of the parking. Now your wheelchair's up against the curb. Now what happens?
I agree. It's a bit of an impediment, but it's been there since 1984, the original instruction of the building.
So just so you know, the accommodation would then have to be that somebody, that there's some kind of a bell or something, where the person in the wheelchair calls for assistance from somebody inside the shop?
Right.
That's what it has to be done, otherwise you're not making a reasonable accommodation, because the person can't get inside.
Okay.
So there needs to be something like that.
Okay.
And the bells are literally those little battery-operated things you stick on the outside of the building, right?
Or a ramp.
Or a ramp.
Which is going to be...
They can even put these little temporary, I don't know about temporary, you know, as an accommodation, you could put something in front. I don't know if that blocks egress, though.
What's going to happen is it's going to require a major redesign of the entrance, because I need a landing at the top with a five-foot radius, which is really going to project into the existing sidewalk. The building is on the lot line.
Right.
So...
No, but I think there are other ways of accommodating, but the typical one is that the person in the shop comes out, as long as that person can be notified that there is someone waiting outside who's stuck.
Okay.
Right?
That seems to be the simplest. Okay. There was a question about photos 29, 30, and 31. The reasons for those photographs was, and I will elaborate further in my next submission, is that we removed five miscellaneous signs that were originally on the facade. So that's why those three photographs document the removal of those five signs. But I will further elaborate in my next submission. The existing icebox previously was clearly in the city street area. It has been moved. Whether or not it's been moved to the actual exact line of the property line is something that I will verify with a copy of the owner's property survey. If it's still slightly encroaching into the property area, I will see to it that that has slid back a little bit further.
Okay. And then show it on the plan?
Yes, I will. Yes. With regard to the street trees, the two existing street trees that are there are presently dead. My client has attempted to reach Department of Parks to possibly see if he can get those replaced. He's not permitted to remove them himself, and we're not quite sure how long it might take to get those replaced, if at all. So he doesn't want to do any improvements to the actual, the tree wells themselves, but I will see to it that the weeds are trimmed and the trash, at the very least, is removed. And I think, last but not least, we'll take a better look at some of the planted areas to make sure that there is no trash or debris or branches or something of like that nature. Maybe try to get a little bit of mulch down as well.
Okay. Good. Any other comments from here?
I really appreciate you being very thorough and going through every comment and trying to address it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Are there any speakers on this? Okay, great. So how much time do you need?
Two to three weeks.
Okay. Because this should really wrap it up, right?
Yes, I would hope so.
Okay. So two to three weeks, at least. Something where we have like one little space, because I don't think it's going to take long to review this. The last submission was just a stack of photographs, so it's going to be that and one drawing that shows the icebox.
Correct.
Right?
And the photo orientations?
Yeah.
And a description of every photograph.
Yeah. But that'll be on, it's easiest if you put it on the photograph, unless that's more trouble for you. It doesn't matter, however you do it.
I don't know if I can fit it on there or not. With the different colors going on, you might not be able to read it.
Okay. All right. Whatever is...
Okay.
We can do this on the 19th of September, then the...
Oh, okay. Yeah, we have a special hearing on the 19th for these kinds of things.
Okay.
So 19th of September, I'm going to close this, I think. So it would be a decision, and we have a submission, you'll submit on August, by August 30.
Okay, great.
Is that okay? Great.
So September 19, special hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, thank you.
So for a motion to close. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Artley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you again. Thank you very much. Item number four, 18385BZ, 20608, 20th Street, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Elise Fullodare on behalf of the applicant for Eric Palatnick, PC. The circular barbed wire was removed on the roof, but the applicant will now remove the traditional wire, too, and will submit photographs. They were just concerned with the scaling of the residential buildings on the side, but I discussed it with them.
Okay. So they're, they're concerned that someone's actually going to climb over that fence?
Just because it's open and there's residential buildings on, like, one of the sides.
Uh-huh. Wow. That's a very devoted thief. That's...
Yeah. But we discussed it, and they'll remove it.
Yeah. Okay. And then, go ahead.
Yeah. And then the gas storage containers were empty, so they sent them back to the company, and they're no longer storing the storage containers on the site.
Oh. They don't need them for whatever it is they do?
They told me they were empty and just sitting there, so they sent them back.
Okay.
And the applicant would like to propose an alternative of washing the walls instead of painting, because the interior of the wall, it said, will trap any moisture, and it will become a problem in the winter, and the walls may fail and freeze, so they were wondering if they could wash them instead.
Like power wash them?
Like power wash them and submit photos like that, just a bit more.
The idea is just that residents are looking down into what's not very attractive, so try to keep it attractive-ish.
So is that, as long as we show it more attractive-ish and submit photos, that'll work?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I think, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Are there any speakers on this? Any other comments about this one? Okay. So really, again, very teeny amount of submission, right? So maybe we could close this also and do the same thing, put it on for the 19. Is that good?
Yeah.
So we'll put it on for that special calendar.
The hearing is at the BSA. Just say again? The hearing's at the BSA. Just...
Yeah, we don't have this time, so it's likely it's going to be at our offices.
Right. It'll be at 250 Broadway. Okay.
We don't have this, we're not sure we have this one for...
Right. Okay. It might be, in other words, it might be at 250 Broadway or...
It will likely be. The only way it wouldn't be is if city planning got their space, which they're not getting, so.
I knew they were getting, right. Okay.
So we're 250 Broadway.
Okay. Okay. So then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Artley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
What date is it on?
September 19.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, September 19.
No, I'm sorry about submission date.
August 30.
August 30.
New cases, item number five, 1915BZ, 9277 Queens Boulevard, Queens.
Good morning, Commissioners. Madam Chair, thank you. Arthur Huff for Eric Weinstein, representing the applicant. With me today is Rich Lanciers, project manager for the design company for the space, and I think I'm going to let him address one of the principal areas of discussion yesterday, having to do with the accessibility. Rich, I think, can also answer questions about the parking. Let me just say that overall, for the building, there are 80 spaces provided, 55 of which meet the requirement for the proposed PCE, six for the 48 hotel rooms in the upper floors, and then 19 for the remaining commercial use group six space. So we do also have some photos, which I'll distribute when Rich takes the microphone of the ground floor space leading to the elevator, and also generally showing what the second floor looks like. Finally, I also have a printout of testimony. We couldn't have someone appear today, but we do have written testimony that we like to submit for the record.
Okay. What's it about?
Oh, it's just a member, user member in support of the application, who also uses the elevator for accessibility purposes.
Ah, okay. So, okay.
And what do you have, the actual total square footage, because you have two different numbers?
The total footage is, I believe, 16,494. Is that right? Yes.
Okay. So you'll make the corrections then?
We'll correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay. And again, there's six spaces for the hotel rooms, and what else?
Six, and I believe that leaves 19 to reach 80 for the remaining commercial floor area, which I believe is use group six.
So 19 is adequate to support the remaining commercial floor area?
Yes. Yes.
But you're going to give us zoning calculations?
We'll provide zoning, yes. We can do a, we can revise and resubmit a zoning calculation sheet showing all the parking calcs.
Okay. Good. Okay. You're going to have your...
Good morning. My name is Richard Lanciers from Toll &amp; Design, project manager for the design company for the new building, as well as the interior of the space. There was a question as to the access, the reason for the change of access from the original board case to the new layout. The new layout was decided after the fact, when the elevator was already installed. This particular elevator serves the entire building, and the retail unit's on the first floor from the cellar, and is only exclusive to retrofitness on the second floor. You can drive into the cellar and then take the elevator up to the first floor, and what looks to be a service corridor is actual access to the individual spaces from the 93rd Street side.
Which individual? To the rear of the retail?
Well, you have the, right, and that's access to that space. It's not, the service entrance would be from the loading dock. That would be, but this is actually another one. I'm sorry.
So this...
Where's the loading dock?
I'm trying to understand. So there is a driveway that runs from Queens Boulevard to 93rd Street.
That is a, that is a drive-thru.
That's the drive-thru.
By Starbucks.
Okay. Oh, that's the drive-thru.
Yes.
So Starbucks...
And there's access on 93rd Street through a sidewalk adjacent to the building, where you can access the kitchen for the hotel cafe. You can access the building to access the hotel lobby, the Starbucks, and the retail space, as well as the retrofitness.
Wait a second. How do you access retrofitness? You go...
There are two entrances, one from the 93rd Street side through the corridor, and then one from Queens Boulevard.
Sorry, which corridor? That's the thing. It's hard for us to, where's the corridor? Is it at the top of the drawing?
It's actually a third off the right.
It's off the right?
Can you walk us through the, if I'm on 93rd Street, where would I get off to access this elevator?
Okay. If you're on 93rd Street, you would turn into the sidewalk adjacent to the drive-thru.
Okay.
Okay? You would walk into the entrance. There's a series of doors.
The third door.
The third door would be your entrance, okay? You can actually access the elevator, go down to the parking structure, okay, or go up to the retrofitness.
So, but how's that work with retrofitness? I mean, if you are doing that and you're entering there to get to the elevator, a gym requires you to check in.
Yeah, they have a lock-off mechanism where you can, where they can lock, the elevator is locked, so when you come in, you can either check in or you let them know that you're going up, and then they can let you up.
And how do you let them know you're going up?
You can go into the lobby, or you can call them.
How do you call, you call them on your cell phone?
You call them on the phone, yeah.
So...
I mean, they may be working out something else for that, but I haven't, we haven't worked on anything else to gain access.
So a disabled person comes in that way and has to call the front desk and say, "I'm here," release the elevator?
Or go to the door where the gym is and access it with their card.
Go to the door where the gym is?
Right.
On the Queens Boulevard side?
No, no, no. No, from the 93rd Street side.
Where is the door to the gym? That's what I...
The third door.
No, the third door is a corridor that services to retail.
Yes, I do.
May he approach and just show us?
Yeah.
Okay. This is your main entrance to the corridor.
Right.
This is your access to retail space and retrofitness.
What?
Which also accesses the whole corridor.
Right.
The elevator services the entire first floor?
Right.
And only exclusive to the second floor.
What do you mean, only exclusive to the...
No one who wants to access the first floor can get up to the second floor now with retrofitness.
But there is a garage, too.
But the garage? The garage down below.
Yeah. You would have to, you would have to go check in with the retrofit.
To do what?
To get up to the second floor.
So how can, that's what, so I'm in a wheelchair. It's hard for me to get from A to B. How do I, when I come in from the drive-thru and I go through that corridor door, and I would love to be right there at the elevator and go up, how do I get to go up? would love to be right there at the elevator and go up, how do I get to go up without having to go here to the front desk and register?
At currently, there is no, there's no access to the elevator to the second floor without checking in with retro. That's a security issue.
So then that puts a person, a disabled person, at the worst possible relationship to getting into the gym. Because unlike everybody else...
Everybody has access to the gym, they have.
They have access that way, but they also, they can park here, but they have to go all the way around like this to get up, right?
I mean, it's difficult in most situations, you have to travel a distance.
So what was the, when we, the original approved plan, in the original approved plan, where was the parking located?
Parking was in the same location.
Same location, and so, and so a person who would park in the little handicap parking lot, how would they, under the original plan, have access to this?
They would have to go through the same elevator.
They, no, because the main lobby used to be here on the approved plan. So the lobby was from 93rd.
And this elevator had, allegedly, had two sides to it, one would open up on the retro, and then one would open up on the car, but you would still have to get buzzed.
So in the original plan, if somebody had parked there?
You wouldn't be able to access.
So they would have had to come through this?
No, actually, you would have to, you would have to go into the cellar, or park on 93rd Street, there was no access for anybody parked in here to get to retro fitness.
Well, the drive-through.
Oh.
You can walk on that sidewalk to the drive.
There is no access.
There's no sidewalk?
This is a drive-through, this is the sidewalk, that's why we created the entrance way, the original, that was original to the new building. So, I mean, it's ADA compliant, although that's designed to lead to retro.
I guess you're at the gym already, so you should be getting a workout if you're in a wheelchair or otherwise disabled. Yeah. So, I don't, you know, I'd say, proceed at your own risk, you know, this is, these are federal issues, not just BSA or building code issues. So, I mean, the right way of doing this would have been to install a single-stop elevator. You have the, you have the handicap parking in the parking lot from Queens Boulevard, you have the entire entrance to the gym now on the Queens Boulevard side, where all the activities are, including the locker room, which by the way, that's the other thing. So I'm in the, which flavor locker room, ladies or men? Men, women's locker room. So, play this one out, I'm in a wheelchair, I need to go to my, the women's locker room, so I have to go that way, right? And then I have to go in my little outfit into the public corridor, into the elevator. So you forced me to now be exposed to people who are unrelated to the gym in the public corridor. The right way to do this is to install a single-stop elevator, you already have that open stairwell, it's an easy thing to do, to just put a one-stop hydraulic elevator right in that double-height stairwell, and then, then they're in. Because you really are asking a disabled person to go to extraordinary measures to get to this gym.
Well, in my opinion, it's not any different than being in a mall situation, where you do have several elevators on several thousands of feet of mall space. I mean, you're entitled to agree or disagree.
Well, no, actually.
The space complies with the ADA regulations, and that's what I was here to convey. If you are looking to add a requirement for the retro fitness, that is something that we can bring to them.
Yeah.
But I'm, I was the original, part of the original design team with the new building, before retro got involved, and then helped retro on the back end when they wanted to change.
But the original approval that we looked at had a very, very clear, clean access for ADA from 93rd Street, right? And whether, you know, whatever the parking situation was...
But no access from Queens Boulevard.
Right, but whatever the parking situation was, could have been dealt with in terms of disabled, I mean, I don't know what the street parking situation is on 93rd Street.
Well, there's nothing on Queens Boulevard.
No, 93rd Street.
It's limited, it's limited, it's no parking, well, there's no parking, I think it's 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and then there are meters on the other, other street, 62nd.
Because people have special parking tags when they're, when it's a disabled car, right? So it entitles them to different kind of parking. What'd you say? Just as a, right. Okay, I don't know, I really think that because the original approval assumed proper ADA access and putting an elevator, you're, you don't even have to, you don't have to do anything, there's a, there's already an open double-height space there, or you put a stairlift, something, so that you can really service your clientele.
That's, that's a suggestion we can make to the client.
And the other thing is, we need, I think that's what, no, we needed proof of the installation and approval of the sprinklers and fire alarm system, because fire department is here.
We will submit those. They are, they are done, fire department letter of approval, sprinkle sign off, yes, stampede, that's been completed. We have, the building has a TCL currently, so it is, those items are taken care of.
Okay. All right, I think that was all the, let's see, so, and it's correct the zoning analysis with the statement of facts, right? And put in that information about the parking spaces and so on. Okay, are there any speakers on this? All right, so, Arthur, do you wanna deal with the submission schedule? So how much time do you need to put together a submission?
I think we have all of these things that we can put together very quickly, so we're open to...
Mm-hmm, but we need to know how we're handling this ADA access issue, problem? That's what happens when you do stuff not pursuant to permits, right?
Space was built out with permits.
You wanna speak, you have to come up to the microphone.
Yeah, if you speak, right, okay. It was built out with permits, but the permits didn't comply with the approved plans, so that's what happens, right? You can have a permit for almost anything, and build whatever, but it's not building according to the approved plans.
Well, so I guess the first thing for us to do is go back to the operator, go back to our client, discuss this, what I'm hearing is whether it's possible to install a lift, some sort of lift in that space where the interior stair is.
Right. Okay, so how about we put this on, what do we have in the September thing? No, we don't, it's October 3rd, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we can put this on for continued hearing on October 3rd, that'll give you enough time.
On this chair? Oh, okay. Among the possible solutions for, for that dedicated interior stairwell space, a stairlift that, you know, travels along the, along the railing of the stairs.
If it's legal, right, it can obstruct the egress, so I don't know what the width of that stair is.
Yes.
Right, so that's another approach, it has to turn around, you know?
Okay.
So, what was I saying, so that, so October 3rd, continued hearing with a submission on September 13th.
September 13th submission, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appeals calendar, item number six, new cases, 2016 4327A, 15 East 30th Street, Manhattan.
Good morning, commissioners, my name is Chris Rizzo, my law firm represents Sky House Condominium. Our primary concern in this appeal at the condominium is the structural void which will face the condominium on East 30th Street, directly across the street. In the course of investigating that structural void, we uncovered other zoning issues which are raised in this appeal, primarily related to legal light and air. I think, before I get into the specific issues, I'd like to say that I think these issues are of tremendous importance in this city, because they deal with two of the most fundamental zoning limits we have, a 12 FAR limit on residential uses, and a requirement for 30 feet of light and air, which comes from the multiple dwelling law, the housing code, and the zoning resolution. And these issues are of particular importance today, as construction costs for boosting native buildings become less costly in relation to the premium that's charged for high-floor luxury condominiums. In your review session yesterday, you expressed a desire to see a concise summary of the issues that are on appeal, and we tried to do that in our July 7, 21st, excuse me, reply letter, which is a two-page letter that really just summarizes the issues. So I wanted just, before I go into a summary of our view of those issues, just read them off, so that everyone is on the same page. There's five of them, I think. One is that structural voids are not legal uses or legal accessory uses. Number two, mechanical floors are not exempt from FAR calculations, mechanical spaces are. Number three, SRO units are entitled to legal light and air under the codes that I mentioned. Number four, this tower illegally limits light and air to those residential units in the Chandler Hotel. And number five, there is inadequate space between buildings on this new zoning lot.
And there is what? Sorry, there's what?
Sure, there is inadequate space between the buildings on this zoning lot, primarily between the hotel and the new tower. That letter also attaches an affidavit from George Janes, our planning consultant. So now, I'll dive into the issues. So, the structural void. In its initial submissions to the Department of Buildings, the developer characterized floors two, three, and four as a structural void. It's 132 feet, and I don't know that the facts are actually really in dispute, it's 132 feet, it's divided into three floors, each of those floors has a 44-foot ceiling height, there is some mechanical space on each of those floors, there's also a lot of dead space. I think the reason the developer characterized this as a structural void is that's because what it, that's what it is. It's intended to boost the height of this building, primarily, it's not primarily, primarily there to house mechanical uses. A structural void is not a permitted use, it's not a permitted accessory use, and I really don't think this board wants to set a precedent for characterizing a structural void as an accessory use. In other words, it's something that is customarily found in relation to a residential building. That's a horrible precedent in this city. Regardless of whether you view this as a structural void or not, however, the condo has serious concerns about whether this is really an exempt, these are really exempt mechanical spaces. As I said, mechanical floors are not exempt under the zoning resolution from FAR calculations, mechanical spaces are, that's an important distinction. Because the DOB has to require there to be some sort of logical nexus, a rational nexus, between the amount of space that's dedicated to mechanical equipment and the exemption which is asked for. The developer gets the issue entirely wrong in its papers and talks about exemptions for mechanical floors, the DOB also conflates the two terms, floor and spaces. The DOB goes a step further, however, and refers to six building plans which purportedly show that these three floors will be properly dedicated to mechanical purposes. I have four of those plans, two are referred to, I've actually never seen, weren't pulled by our expediter, I don't know what to say about them. But I can say that plans A103 and 104 show spaces on these purported mechanical floors that are for nothing more than floor drains. M103, Plan 1 M03, refers to future mechanical equipment in certain rooms. I'm not an engineer, I don't purport to be, but a layman's review, a simple layman's review of these plans raises serious questions about the vigorousness of the review, and as I said, the lack of any nexus between the amount of exemption claimed and what the plans show. And I think that's absolutely essential. This is different than living spaces, where a super-high ceiling height might have some sort of relation to an amenity or a quality of life. These are accessory uses, and it's absolutely essential, and the BSE has held before, that there has to be some sort of demonstration about a nexus between an accessory use and the amount of space dedicated to an accessory use and the exemption claim. So now, I'd like to move on unless there's any questions about that.
Yeah, I do have a question.
Yes, please.
So on the drawings that DOB reviews, what are the names, how are the rooms designated?
Look, they're hard to read, and the plans I have are hard to read, and the plans, just for clarity, that are referred to by the DOB are A103, A104, M103, M104, and I think it's A601 and A602. The 600 drawings I don't have, and I haven't seen them. There is no reference to labeling on those rooms. The rooms are just referred to with a floor drain, FD for floor drain, and the M drawings is a reference to future mechanical equipment. It's hard to make out what that mechanical equipment will be, but the term "future" on the M103 drawings is very clear. Those floors are also adequately served by passenger elevators, stairwells, lobbies, trash rooms, et cetera, which suggests the ability to convert them to future uses other than mechanical uses in the future.
So, but they're not labeled "mechanical"?
The drawings are labeled "mechanical floors."
That's what I mean, so, they're not labeled "structural void," they're labeled "mechanical", right?
That's right.
Which is something that you find in the zoning resolution, mechanical space, mechanical rooms, so that the Department of Buildings knows how to review.
Sure.
Review it. So structural void is more like a, yeah, well, I would have to say it's the, when they were applying for their various ZRD1s, it was, yeah, a shorthand way of explaining what's going on in the building, so that they could ask the questions that were being posed, right? But the questions weren't, yeah, the structural void is not a term of art, right? It's not a defined term.
The ZRD1s really didn't relate primarily to the ZRD1 questions that were being posed. That was how they labeled those floors and those spaces, which I think is telling.
No, on the drawings, they labeled the spaces as...
On the ZRD1s, they described the spaces as structural void.
They described them as a way of making it just kind of a, yeah, an abbreviated version of what's going on here, but it's not that they labeled the drawings "structural void."
That's right.
Right, okay. Okay, and then, other question. So, and in terms of understanding how much mechanical space is required for the mechanical equipment, presumably, and we'll find out from DOB, there are engineers who are looking at that, right? What's the believable amount of mechanical equipment that you have for a building of this size, right?
I would hope so, I would imagine so. You know, as I say, all I can do is give a layman's review of building plans, and our urban planner did the same, and it raises serious questions. And that's the reply from the Department of Buildings, developer's reply is really devoid of any sort of analysis, but DOB's reply is simply conclusory. We reviewed it, mechanical floors are exempt, end of story, look at these plans, and plans don't really back that up. And given, given the characterization of these floors as structural voids, and the absurd ceiling heights, I think there's some return.
Well, the first, I think your, your question is actually two-part. Your first question is, is the amount of area that's devoted to mechanical space sort of legitimate in light of how much mechanical equipment there is?
That's right.
So, but when you're reviewing it, since it's a question about mechanical equipment, rather than having a land use expert, or a code expert looking at it, wouldn't it have made more sense to have a mechanical engineer look at the drawings?
Sure.
So, in your case, so that you could make a case, so your mechanical engineer could dispute their mechanical engineer and say, you know, something to that effect, right?
Yeah, look, we could have taken the tactic, I really don't want to get into a battle of my engineer versus their engineer. All I want to do is raise the legal issues, I said, about a structural void, and number two, a simple, a simple review of these plans suggests these are really not mechanical floors, there are some mechanical spaces on floors that are otherwise empty, and that raises questions.
No, but so that, that's why...
How are you making, sorry, how are you coming to that conclusion? I guess that's the question that we are raising here.
So, so if you're saying it, to a layperson, it looks like there's too much space devoted to mechanical, it's sort of the, not really the right question to be asking. To a mechanical engineer who reviewed these drawings, there's too much space devoted to mechanical equipment, because you only need this many furnaces or whatever, right? But a layperson looking at it and seeing a drain without looking at how many layers of mechanical drawings there are, and maybe it's draining a piece of equipment that's not shown on the drawings that you have, right?
Look, it's possible that the 600 series drawings show equipment in the room that all the other plans show simply as an empty room with a floor drain.
Right. Right.
That's possible. I'd like to hear that from DOB. It's possible that it is accepted building practice, DOB practice, to allow spaces for future equipment. I think that's questionable, but perhaps that's how they're going to respond to the future rooms.
And then, in terms of the height, where in the zoning resolution do you have any guidance about floor area?
First of all, as I said, I think these are, these were labeled structural voids for a reason, and I think that it's an attempt to characterize it as some kind of accessory use to boost floor height, and I think that's not a permitted accessory use, and that's well within your discretion, your authority, to disallow, to require there to be some sort of purpose for that height other than just to boost the height of the building overall. I think the DOB, the BSA has ruled in the past that there has to be some sort of nexus between the size of accessory spaces and the amount of space which is devoted to them. I think that should be applied to mechanical spaces. I don't think that simply is a question of floor area, it should be a question of volume and height as well. And I think, and I think, at some point, this board has got to say that a building, a ceiling height, an excessive ceiling height, is not allowed, that it's no longer serving the purpose of the underlying floor. I mean, so we have 44-foot ceiling heights here. Perhaps the developer and the DOB can come up with some sort of explanation as to why that 44 feet is required for airflow or circulation. I don't know, seems crazy to me, given that most buildings function without that. But what about 80 feet? What about 120 feet? Is really this board has no authority to address that issue? That's troubling for me.
Well, so the thing is, it's not a question of really the, whether the board has the authority totally, I mean, this is the zoning resolution that we rely on, and isn't this the domain of the City Planning Commission to take a look at that? And they haven't, this is obviously a new phenomenon, relatively new, right? And so, but on the other hand, you know, I want to say, like, the Gainesboro Studios that are on 57th, 59th Street have 35-foot ceilings in those rooms. Those things were actually built before zoning, but they're envious, enviable spaces, right? So, why wouldn't a 40-foot high ceiling in our living room be the same issue? And would that, and again, the zoning resolution only speaks about horizontal space, which we have a letter from City Planning recently that just talks about the horizontal space, but that's what it's doing. It's measuring the floor. There isn't anything in the definition of floor area that goes vertical.
I'm not concerned about living rooms or bedrooms with cathedral ceilings, because number one, those uses count towards floor area, and number two, there's some sort of connection between a high ceiling height and the use at issue. Studio, a living room, whatever it might be.
A 60-foot high living room.
Sure.
Why is that not...
Because are you, that has a different...
That has some sort of amenity, it has some sort of amenity value.
That has a restricted value, and that's which cannot be added to a mechanical space? Is that what...
But if you had a living room with a 40-foot ceiling and then a 20-foot void on top of it with a drop ceiling of some kind, a void that was there just for boosting the height of the building a little bit further?
So zoning resolution doesn't say...
That's it.
Zoning resolution does not say that a residential floor has to be 10 feet or 12 feet, no more than that.
Absolutely not.
Same way, it does not say that the mechanical space has to be no more than 20 or whatever. It is counting the horizontal place, the plate, whether that's residential or whether that's mechanical, it's same way that's being measured. So I'm a little confused that you're saying that zoning does limit the height of the floor for residential, whereas it does not, but it's intended. It's same, especially in this zoning district. If you're talking about a tower on a base project or a contextual building envelope, there is a height limit. And that height limit invariably sets in the floor-to-ceiling height, but the zoning does not say in these zoning districts, you cannot have, in an R10A, you know, the height limit is 210, but that does not mean, that zoning doesn't say therefore your floor-to-ceiling height of a residential or mechanical cannot be more than 12. It's up to you whether you want to have a cathedral-ceiling living room of 50 foot with a 20-foot mechanical. It's completely up to the developer to decide that, and the same thing is being exercised here. So I'm not sure how you're making that comparison and...
Look, I agree the zoning resolution is problematically silent on this issue, I absolutely agree, but I reject the idea that excessive ceiling heights that have no connection to the underlying use, at some point, do not become an accessory use of their own that is not allowed. As I said, if you have a void above a living room, a drop ceiling, a void, at some point, that has to be characterized as its own separate use or accessory use that has no relation to the residential use at issue. And that's what we're saying on this mechanical floor. You have 44-foot ceiling heights, you have no sort of demonstration that that building structure is in any way connected to the mechanical use on the floor below it. At some point, that becomes its own accessory use which should not be allowed. That's our primary point.
So, I have two questions in respect to that. First of all, you said that the zoning resolution is silent as to heights, right? In terms of floor area. So, the first part of it is, this is an interpretive appeal, and so the Board of Standards and Appeals is limited in interpreting what the zoning resolution says. When the zoning resolution is silent, it's silent, it said nothing. So we have no authority to interpret something that isn't said. And we can't, we can't impose on the zoning resolution because then that's kind of like, you know, courts making law and so on, even though there's legislation in place. We can't do that, that's the job of the City Planning Commission.
I don't agree that your power is that limited. This is a DOB interpretation, and it is absolutely your, this is a DOB interpretation that any, no matter how tall the ceiling is, no matter how tall the structure is in a building, there's no limit on ceiling heights and mechanical spaces.
But where, what do they, what would they be interpreting?
Because at some point, excessive ceiling heights in a mechanical room should be treated as an accessory use, independent, independent of the mechanical use, and should not be allowed. That's our, my point.
Okay, so that's the next part of the question I don't understand. How did you convert, so the floor is down here.
Yep.
The whole thing is a volume of space, right? How did you convert someplace in that volume to something that's accessory? That's, I'm trying to find in the definition of accessory, how you turn air into accessory. You know, you can say the mechanical room is accessory to the building, which it is, right? You can say lots of uses which take up floor space are accessory to the building, a hairdresser or something in the building, right? But how does the volume of air switch from being one thing to accessory?
Not necessarily the volume of air, it's the structure of the building. I mean, there's, there is, there's 44 feet here, a certain amount of that, that structure is related to what's necessary to serve that mechanical equipment. A certain amount of that structure, which is not related to that mechanical equipment, is there just to boost the height of the building. And our point is that that should not be treated as part of the mechanical use or the other accessory use, it should be treated as its own use, a structural void that is not allowed. That's, that's the point.
So, all right, so let's, let's switch this a little bit. So, you use mechanical, well, mechanical space is obviously necessary in a building, right? No, no question about that. Let's switch this. They have what we would consider to be normal-height mechanical rooms, say 20-foot high ceilings because the equipment is big, right? But the, but the design goal is to get the building high, right? So, on the lower floors, they have hotel rooms where you don't have the same issue about residential distance between windows, just for argument's sake. So on, they throw in two hotel floors that make up for the difference. Those floors have 60-foot-high ceilings. You don't have an issue with that. 60-foot high, one ballroom.
A ballroom, sure.
Or not, just to make it easy, so there's no partitions in there, it's a cheap way to go, right? One ballroom with 60-foot-high ceilings that...
As long as there's some...
Or 80-foot high, because we want to really bring it up.
As long as there's some nominal argument that that ceiling height is related to the use, the hotel room, the ballroom, the residential use, then...
An 80-foot-high ceiling in a ballroom is related to the ballroom use?
As long as there's a nominal argument related to it. I don't like that conclusion, but as long as someone can make a straight-faced argument that they want that ceiling height because of the use below.
So it's about, it's about making a straight, so that's the subjective part of it, again, the straight-faced argument about whether an 80-foot or a 100, throw in 100-foot, because the goal is to get to whatever the number was, 150 feet, right?
The goal was to get to 150 feet, to boost the residential floors above the neighboring buildings.
We just put a ballroom on the ground floor, and we make it 150 feet high, then you'd be good?
Look, I don't know what the code requirements are for a ballroom, you might run into some other issues, but let's assume that, assume that it's fine, and somebody can make a straight-faced argument in an application that we have this structure in this ballroom, we want it for the ballroom. I don't know that there's anything that the BSA could do about that.
But, I mean, I just, because you're asking the board to look at a mechanical space, we presume that a mechanical engineer was, was working on this project and talking to a mechanical engineer at the Department of Buildings, both making straight-faced arguments about the need for this space. And that's why I think the board was asking, what's a mechanical engineer say about this?
Look, I expected the DOB response to be that our engineers conclude that 44 feet of building height is appropriate for this equipment, circulation, airflow, I don't know, something. I didn't see that response. The only response we got from the DOB is, we have no ability to control ceiling heights on mechanical floors, period. And I think that's really a problem.
But again, the reason I was using the ballroom as the example is, I mean, it's clear, obviously, you're representing your clients who want to avoid having their views be obstructed, right?
Well, that's not really the issue.
Parking space with stackers, there's another one.
I just want to point out, this is not a view issue, because the condo loses its views no matter what, there's going to be a big building here. It's about having a dead structural void facing them and facing the street block.
But isn't that more of a design issue? I mean, for instance, we, there are lots of glass-clad buildings where you have no idea what's going on behind, right? And other kinds of cladding, where you have no idea what's going on behind. So, isn't that more of a debate with the developer over the design and cladding of their building and not...
The developer's response that there'll be no windows, or at least the ZRD1 say there'll be no windows in this space, so we're going to be looking...
Well, no windows as opposed to a cladding where you can't actually...
I don't know what the cladding will be, but...
Right, but I mean, now talking...
It's got to be dead, dead space. But anyway, I don't think it's a design issue. Look, I absolutely understand your question about where the ability to control height in mechanical floors comes from. I think it requires you to make a rational interpretation of the zoning resolution and to conclude that at some point, excessive height becomes its own accessory use or use that's not allowed.
So if you wanted us to get to your place in the reasoning...
Sure.
You would have to explain to us how floor space that's used for legitimate mechanical purpose, which we're assuming because you have mechanical engineers who are looking at all the equipment lined up that needs a certain height, you would have to explain to us how, at a certain point, that switches to being an accessory use when you can't stand there and you can't use it for anything. And that's the part that I, you can't use it, so how is it a use? I just, when you look at, you need, because this is actually the first I've heard in, I didn't see in the papers, any discussion about the switch to an accessory use. So you need to go through the accessory analysis, definition of accessory use, when something becomes accessory, when it is accessory, and so on, and help us follow along in your reasoning, because at the moment, I don't understand, I'm just seeing air becoming accessory, even though the only way it can get to the air is with a balloon. And you would have to articulate a standard that's not a subjective standard as well.
Well, I think this board has to interpret what our accessory use is all the time, new uses come up, customarily found in relation to the underlying use is the standard that's in the zoning resolution. So I think you do have the standard before you, question is whether you want to apply it to excessive height or excessive building structure. And I don't think this is just related to mechanical floors, you might have cell phone towers or towers or other sorts of accessory uses on buildings where there is height that has no relation to the use or to the accessory use, where this could be a problem. The most logical application is here on super-tall towers, but there are other potential applications of this problem.
So I don't think you're connecting the dots for us. I think you think, you've connected the dots, but I need to see it in, in a brief that's clear, and if you have case law that you can refer to, where accessory has somehow been analyzed in a way that's getting you to your argument, that would be useful, but I don't think you've connected them that way simply.
Is that a request for some sort of supplemental submission? I'm happy to do that, sure.
Yes, if you're, if you want to pursue your, this part of your argument, which you didn't have previously.
Yeah, I do think it is in the papers, I'm happy to make a supplemental submission that explores it further.
And try to, because, just to note, the papers that you submitted, even though I know they've been tweaked and tweaked and tweaked, are rambling. You need to focus on the concept that you are pursuing and stay with it, stay tightly with it, cite the case law, and don't go off on a tangent, stay with the one idea, otherwise it's very hard to follow what it is you want us to conclude from that.
Well, it sounds like you have a very specific issue you want us to address on this accessory use, so we'll take it up from there.
Okay. Okay, you want to go to your next?
So the next issue relates to legal windows and the separation between, between buildings. There are residential units in this building. The developer cites anecdotally a comment from the attorney for the hotel that there are eight. The hotel's recent mortgage finance documents refer to 20 leases in this building.
20 leases or 20...
Leases.
Residential units, 20 leases?
Leases with long-term tenants, yes.
Okay.
And then, of course, there are 148 rent-stabilized units in this building. And my understanding of that issue is that the number of permanent residents of this building has fluctuated over time. Obviously, now, hotel units are command of premium, but if those units were to be rented out to long-term tenants, under long-term leases, they would be rent-stabilized, and they would be residential units again, but we don't need to get there. There are eight to 20 permanent residents in this building. The, the law requires legal light and air to those residents, and that is primarily based in the Housing Maintenance Code, which says that every living room in a multiple dwelling must have a legal window that faces a legal court, a legal yard, or a street. A living room is any place for sleeping and occupation. A multiple dwelling is any building that has three or more residences in it. This is a multiple-dwelling building. It doesn't matter that it's also a transient hotel, a lot of talk about that, and frankly, our understanding of the issue has sharpened over time, but it doesn't matter, this is a multiple dwelling, there are three or more residential units in here, and the requirements of the Housing Maintenance Code kick in.
Actually, a multiple dwelling includes a Class B, right, transient hotel?
Under the Housing Maintenance Code, a multiple dwelling includes, as I say, a building with three or more residences, except a building used for purely commercial purposes. I don't know if, under the Housing Maintenance Code, a pure hotel that's built today and is solely a hotel would qualify as a multiple dwelling under the Housing Maintenance Code definition.
But the multiple-dwelling law covers almost the same thing as the Housing Maintenance Code, so you should be looking at the multiple dwellings.
Yes. The definition from the multiple dwelling from the Housing Maintenance Code is exactly as it is in the multiple-dwelling law. But I, as I say, I don't, we don't have to get to that issue, this is a multiple dwelling, and there are legal light and air requirements for those windows. So the next question is why that requirement applies to the tower, to the developer. And then, you, so you've got two provisions of the zoning resolution which are relevant there, and they operate actually independently of each other, I think. 23851 says that every inner court should be of a certain size, 1,200 square feet, unless there are no legal windows on it. So we have a court here that's undersized, and we have one zoning lot. And I think the rational interpretation of 23851 is that you should look at that inner court requirement and the sizing requirements in relationship, relationship to the zoning lot as a whole. The hotel's on the zoning lot, the development site is on the, on the zoning lot, development site is empty, there's a chance to rebuild that court in a compliant fashion, and it should be built in a compliant fashion. These are not existing buildings, which are not going to be changed, we're not talking about that application. The, I think the DOB is defending its decision here not to require an adequately-sized court or legal light and air for these windows based on the former lot-line theory, which is well-known to you and to others. I think it is wrong to actually apply that to legal light and air requirements, especially requirements that aren't based in the zoning resolution. I don't think the BSA should extend it to that application, and it should find that 23851 requires an adequate court in this instance. 23-851 requires an adequate court in this instance. Now, I want to get to the second part of it, which is 23-711. 23-711 is much clearer, and it rises and falls regardless of how you interpret the Housing Maintenance Code we went through, or 23-851, because it says very clearly, in all districts as indicated, they require minimum distance between the portion of a building containing dwelling units and any other building on the same zoning lot, shall vary according to the height of such buildings and the presence of legally required windows. And then it goes through a 40 to 60 foot separation which is required between buildings on the same zoning lot. The zoning resolution there refers very clearly to zoning lot, there is no room for DOB interpretation or application of a former lot line theory. You have a hotel, you have a new tower which has multiple dwellings in it, has dwelling units in it, there's clearly a 40 to 60 foot separation which is required, depending on whether it's wall to wall, or window to wall, or window to window. You know, you talk about the literal reading of the zoning resolution and the ability to interpret, et cetera, where it's silent, where it's not here, the zoning resolution is very much not silent, it applies to zoning lots. And it's a chance, I think, I think these two, these two requirements work in tandem to make sure that there's adequate light and air between buildings. When one fails, when 23-851 fails, 711 kicks in to make sure there's adequate space.
So, just to be clear, your, your original submission was pursuing the CFO of the Chandler Hotel, are you no longer interested in pursuing the CFO of the Chandler Hotel?
The, the CFO of the Chandler Hotel, I don't think is relevant.
Okay.
And I think it's not relevant because, you know, as the cases which are cited by the developer say, the Continental case and the Greystone case say, a CFO doesn't dictate whether, what uses are legal or not. And the fact that this CFO refers to a transient hotel doesn't mean that there aren't other legal uses in this building, there clearly are, and it's absolutely irrational, the DOB, to say that it can look no further than the certificate of occupancy and deciding how zoning should be applied.
The reason that I'm asking is, when you raise the CFO question of the Chandler Hotel, and whether or not the CFO is valid, you put at risk the Chandler Hotel's CFO, right? So therefore, now the Chandler Hotel has to be represented by council because they have an interest in this, because they need to protect their CFO, right? Are you continue, do you continue to want us to look at the CFO of the Chandler Hotel, or are you resting instead on some units that you actually probably don't know the whereabouts of in the building that are occupied arguably by long-term tenants?
I don't, I don't know that we were ever contesting the CFO of the Chandler Hotel, and I don't.
Okay.
I don't think we, I don't think we are, we are contesting the CFO.
Okay, so the CFO is no longer on the table.
Really, I don't think it is. To me, that was, that was really the defense of the Department of Buildings, was, hey, the CFO says transient hotel, we don't have to look any further than that. That's the relevance of the CFO here, and that's the issue before you, is, is that really the standard that's applied to the DOB? You don't have to look further than the certificate of occupancy when judging what zoning requirements come into play. I think the answer clearly is no, and I hope that's the way you rule. Other than that, I don't see how the CFO is relevant to us.
So, again, with respect to the uses, whether those are residential uses or transient hotel uses, I think that inside the Chandler Hotel, for one, you're saying that there is something like 28 long-term leases, or 20 long-term leases, you don't know where they are in the building, so they may not be anywhere near this corner.
Actually, you know, the affidavit of George James references that issue and where the units appear to be, so I refer you back to that. Our consultant visited the building and talked to residents and looked at where the units were located.
How would, how would residents know who has a long-term lease versus who doesn't? So, how are we supposed to, how can we rely on that kind of anecdotal wandering?
Well.
I mean, obviously, there's, the long-term leases are leases, either there are leases that are tied into specific locations, or they're not.
Look, there appear to be floors of the Chandler Hotel which are for the SRO units, and floors which are for the transient guests. They look and they feel different. I don't think it's a leap of.
Right.
Judgment on your part, I, I expected the developer's response, or the DOB's response to be, hey, none of these people face our development site, so who cares? By the way, that's not an issue for 23-711 of the zoning resolution, the space between buildings is triggered regardless of how you rule on legal windows.
23-711 has to do with residential buildings, so it's the space between a legally required residential window, right? So, any of the 23s.
No, what 23-711 says is, on this, on one zoning lot, the distance between any building and a building containing multiple dwellings shall be.
No, a building containing legally required windows for a 23 is always residential. It's not a hotel, because that's in, that's in the commercial regulations.
I don't think that's what 23-711 says, but you have a tower which has residences and legal windows and multiple dwellings in it, and you have another building on the zoning lot.
Sorry, if you're in 23, we're talking residential.
Sure.
And so the windows that are legally required for the residential building have to have a minimum distance in certain cases, right? But if you're in a hotel building, then there actually aren't regulations about the distance of windows. The zoning resolution unfortunately doesn't provide much guidance for hotel windows, you have to go to the multiple dwelling law. Okay? So, if, so if we're just talking about the distance between windows that are legally required for the multiple dwelling law, that's a different subject, as opposed to if it's in the 23s.
If I'm doing a supplemental submission to you to clarify our position on things, I'd love to have the chance to address this, because I think 23-11 applies regardless of what you decide is in or not in, and where it is in the hotel.
Okay.
But.
Read the text very, very carefully and understand that 20, that 23 is the residential zoning district regulations, and you can't use it for anything else, or you'll be really very sad when you finally build your building and someone points out that you're using the wrong section of the zoning resolution, and it should have been in 33 or something else. Okay? That's, that's, yeah. Okay. But I do want.
But you're, the point we were on was, where are these units in the Chandler Hotel? Maybe none of them face the development site, and this is not an issue. I expected that to be the response from the DOB and from the developer, that was not the response. And all the facts I have are that these built, units are spread out on certain floors in the building and face all different directions in the Chandler Hotel, and some of them face this site.
So at the moment, you don't have any information on that, but I do want to, I mentioned this at the review session, so there is a section in the rent stabilization code that has to do with these long-term units, right? Did you have a chance to look at that?
No.
Okay. So, you know that we've gone through many periods of housing emergencies in New York City, and in the 1960s, there was a housing emergency that had to do with single residence occupancy, residency occupancy. And at that time, there was a provision which referred to, actually, in your case, Nutter v., whoever it was against, Nutter v. W&amp;J Hotel. So, and in that case, the hotel, let's say, the transient hotel resident who came to check in for the night, came the next morning and demanded a lease, and was refused it, and was physically removed from the hotel. So that hotel owner had committed a violation of the rent stabilization code and the administrative code, and the court held that they were required to give her a lease on demand, and that her lease had to be for a minimum of six months. So all of those rules fall into the administration, administrative code, Section 26-506, and it specifically applies to hotels. And it specifically requires a person who's, who's the temporary resident of a hotel to be entitled to ask for a lease. And that held until 2009. So, the purpose of that regulation was to try to alleviate the housing crisis, but it didn't convert, what, its purpose was not to convert those hotel rooms into apartments, into residences. The purpose was to provide a temporary solution for housing crisis. So the idea that those tenants now in this building may have permanent leases doesn't convert them from being a hotel into being a use group two residence. So, and they need to be a use group two residence in order for Section 23 of zoning resolution to apply. Right? You can't, you, you need to, you need to move it into residential use in order for the residential zoning regulations to apply. And this section of the admin code doesn't convert a hotel into a residential building.
I, I don't think that's, that's the relevant analysis. The citation to the Nutter case, as far as I was concerned, was simply to make the analogy that SRO tenants are entitled to the protections of the residential stabilization law, we should entitle them to the same protections of legal light and air. It wasn't meant to, to be a case that dictated the outcome here. The zoning resolution clearly refers to the Housing Maintenance Code for the definition of legally required window. If you look up the definition of legally required window, it refers you back to the Housing Maintenance Code. And the Housing Maintenance Code, I went through the analysis, defines legal windows in a certain way, and it clearly applies to SRO units that are in this hotel.
Okay, so you're going to need to say, if it clearly applies, show us the sentence that tells, actually show us, where in the zoning res, where in each of these texts do you link all of this together to make it actually apply to this project, right? So, or to this building, to the Chandler? Because at the moment, I don't see how you can convert what is a hotel, a use group five use, that is regulated under the commercial zoning regulations and the multiple dwelling law in terms of light and air, how you can convert that into a residential building simply by the fact of them having stabilized leases that are part of the rent stabilization code, that actually doesn't have anything to do with the zoning resolution.
That, you, you bring us back, I think, to a fundamental question in this appeal, which is, are SRO units entitled to, do they have legally required windows? Are they entitled to legal light and air?
Yes.
And the provision I rely on is, is 27-258, 2058, 27-2058 of the Housing Maintenance Code, which defines what a legal window is. And, and that is the definition which dictates the term legal window under the zoning resolution. It's 27-2058.
Sorry, 205, what?
27-2058.
Eight.
Of the Housing Maintenance Code. So I absolutely would be happy to address this issue and connect the dots in your, in your words in a supplemental submission.
Okay.
But.
Okay, but.
That's the fundamental issue, are you going to apply legal light and air requirements to SRO units?
So, so to be clear, an SRO located in a hotel, because there are also SROs located in residential buildings.
Sure.
An SRO located in a hotel is in a commercial use in a hotel, right? Hotel hat, hotel rooms are required to be provided with legal light and air, but they're not regulated by the zoning resolution. They're regulated by the multiple dwelling law.
So would you treat these units in apartment hotels differently from in transient hotels?
It depends on whether they're use group two or use group five, I think they're use group two.
Use group two is a part.
Yeah, it's apartment hotels, so that's a residential.
Apartment hotels are allowed in residential districts, transient hotels are generally not, and I, that's, to me, that's a big leap, that's not in the Housing Maintenance Code, is to treat those two types of units differently.
Yeah, but don't mix all your codes together, state, you're trying to enforce the zoning requirement.
But the zoning resolution relies on the Housing Maintenance Code for the definition of legally required window.
So you're gonna, if you're making these arguments, which I'm having trouble, say, agreeing with, you're going to need to connect all of those dots very, very systematically, and not leap from one code to the other unless instructed to do so by the zoning resolution. And, and if you're in a hotel building, you need to understand what the rules are for light and air for a hotel, okay? Because they're not in Section 23. Okay? It's just not.
And I'm not relying primarily on Section 23, I'm relying on the Housing Maintenance Code and its, and its basis in the multiple dwelling law. That, that's actually the point, is that you need to look at the Housing Maintenance Code to deal with these SRO units. And there is no distinction between these units and a transient hotel and an apartment hotel. That's a zoning issue, and that's fine.
Okay, I don't want to belabor this, but I do need you to understand better the multiple dwelling law, because you seem to be a little bit lost here. So, you're not looking in the right section that applies to hotels, you should do that, okay? All right, you want to go on to your next point?
That is the final point, the final point relates to 23-711, and I think you've asked for more clarification on our position on that.
Okay, yes. All right. Did you also have questions about the idea of a zoning lot merger, creating a non-compliance?
No.
No, okay, you're good. That was something that was raised.
That was raised.
That was raised in your, in your two-page letter that you just read from the beginning of your statement, you said your fifth item was an ad space between buildings, primarily between the hotel and new tower on the new zoning lot.
That deals with 23-711.
Right, okay, all right.
Thank you for your, your careful consideration of this, this is, you know, I appreciate this has been a very in-depth analysis of it.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions, comments? What? You should speak louder, because it's, you're in an open meeting, say.
Sorry, I guess my question is, if you're saying that if an SRO is there in a hotel, and therefore a multiple dwelling law overrides the zoning, can you give examples of projects or buildings in the city where a transient hotel which is being temporarily used as an SRO, where that rule has been applied?
Which, which rule, sorry?
Of the, the need for light and air.
Multiple dwelling law applies to transient hotels, we've granted waivers to that.
But the lot line windows are not.
No, no, it's just simply that if you have a hotel, you wander around in the zoning resolution looking for instructions about how well kind of light and air it needs, and the only thing you have for a hotel is what the required rear yard is.
Right.
But not about courts, for example. So there you are, lost, and you wander to the multiple dwelling law, which says, except where stated in the zoning resolution.
Thank you for correcting.
Courts have to look like this, right?
It's the court issue that I'm asking about, it's the situation of the court.
Right, so the court is in the multiple dwelling law.
Right.
Right, which is really why you need to look at the multiple dwelling law and the court regulations, okay? Trust me on this one.
Oh, I will address it in.
Okay.
In our submission.
Okay.
You know, but let's, let's face it, there are plenty of hotels that have condo uses in them, and are split between transient hotel uses and residential condo units.
That's different, that's a use, the bottom is hotel, and the top is residential, and up there meets the residential regulations in the zoning resolution, and down there meets the commercial regulations in the zoning resolution, plus the multiple dwelling law, must. And ideally, the hotel doesn't look too, the building doesn't look too weird, because it's meeting them in different ways.
Sure, in this case, in this case, you could have a jumbled collection of uses, where SRO units are next to hotel units. I don't think that's actually the case here, I think they're actually segregated to discreet parts of the Chandler Hotel.
Okay, but don't forget what uses in the zoning resolution is something very specific, use group two or use group five with respect to residential or a hotel, right?
I get that, I just don't think that dictates.
Yeah.
What the requirements are under the multiple dwelling law, New York State multiple dwelling law, or the New York City Housing Maintenance Code, which dictates here.
Also, if the CFO is for a hotel, he needs to address, like, right, I mean, if the CFO says this is a hotel.
Right.
Then, then it's a hotel.
Well, I mean, you know, to that point, it's not as if there have been, there haven't been CFOs for things.
Sure.
And they're occupied by completely unrelated uses, and so.
I mean.
Right, and so DOB wouldn't force against that, right?
That's the Continental case and the Greystone case, it said, that essentially, my reading on it, is the CFO doesn't dictate, it's whether the underlying uses are legal or not. And so I think this idea that you, under the city charter, the DOB looks at the CFO and goes no further is irrational.
Okay, but we're not looking at the CFO, right? To be clear.
I am not looking at the CFO.
We're trying not to unpack somebody else's CFO who's not even involved in developing this building, right?
Yeah, no, I mean, the Continental case says the fact that the CFO doesn't list legal uses doesn't make them illegal, as long as they're legal, otherwise legal under law.
Okay.
So actually, no, I think the case law says the opposite, we don't unpack it. We don't unpack it.
We don't unpack.
Yep.
Okay. I just want to get the C of O out of here. You know, this Chandler is now represented by council. As you know, that costs a lot of money, because they need to protect their interests.
So I'm agreeing with you.
Okay. We're not trying to unpack the Chandler Hotel's C of O.
Yep.
Okay? For the record, to make it clear, Chandler, you don't have to, like, roll over sleepless nights.
I agree.
Right? Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you. So I'd like to hear from the DOB, please.
My name is Mark Davis. I'm an Assistant General Counsel with the New York City Department of Buildings. The appellant raises several arguments regarding DOB's job permit issue. I will address them in turn. Beginning with mechanical floors. The challengers argue that the mechanical floors two through four of the subject building are too high. However, as there is no maximum floor-to-ceiling limit for the mechanical floors in the zoning resolution, the appellant's arguments are of no merit. Yesterday's executive session, the Commissioners asked how DOB determines whether proposed mechanical space is consistent with and not in excess of the needs of the building. Generally, the plans that we receive contain specifications of equipment to be installed, but not representations of accessory ducts, pipework, or specified circulation space. And based upon the drawings and the equipment details, DOB plan examiners estimate how much floor space will be necessary. There's not a set formula. However, as the Commissioners have indicated during the question of this hearing, with regard to the height of the mechanical floors, there's just simply no limit or regulation in the zoning resolution.
So just to clarify, and you may need to check with your engineers about this, but, so, what you said is, they receive specs on the mechanical equipment, and I know the drawings also show the mechanical equipment in place. So then, the, there are mechanical engineers on staff at DOB? Is that correct?
We have mechanical engineers.
Yeah. So they are, I'm just, to be clear about this, and so they look at the specifications and they compare it to what they see on the drawings, and then they say, you know, why does this need such a giant room? There's only one piece of equipment, or something like that. And then they would say, sorry, that can't count as an exempt floor space.
Right. If the examiners believe that, based upon the specifications that they review and their knowledge of the equipment and their best estimate as to accessory equipment, pipes, duct work, yes, they will say that this isn't sufficient.
Right. I guess, so another kind of question that we posed yesterday was, you know, what's typical of a building of this size? You know, we kind of looked around the neighborhood and said, oh, look, this one has six mechanical floors, too. You know, that's not very scientific, but we were observing another building of the same height. Can, is there a sort of a standard, or not a standard, like a kind of common sense review of that? You know, it would make sense that there are this many mechanical floors for a building of this size? Something to that effect.
I'm not sure if there's a specific criteria, a comparison to other buildings, and how many floors. Our review is more in depth than that. It gets into the nitty-gritty of the actual equipment specified. Certainly, you know, if this, if the record of this hearing is being kept open, and you would like other submissions on that particular issue, I can inquire further.
Or is there like a rule of thumb, 4% of the total floor area, or some number like that? Is there something where they, there's sort of a check on whether that makes sense? Oh my God, it's 20% of the floor area, that sounds enormous. Something like that.
I would also assume the placement of the mechanical space is completely contingent upon the lot size. A narrow lot would result in more stacking of mechanical space, as opposed to a wider lot would allow for more of a horizontal space allocation.
And in this case, most of the mechanical floors are at the bottom. In recent buildings, we've seen them sort of distributed in sort of 20-story intervals or something like that. So does that make a difference when there's no transfer? Those are called transfer floors. When there's no transfer floor, does that make a difference? And you can understand why maybe from a design point of view, you wouldn't want to have a transfer floor, because that's where the views are. So, okay. And then, okay, if you wanted to continue.
Yes, yes. That's right. Okay. As to the issue about the minimum court size requirements, we have argued in our brief that zoning resolution 23-851 does not apply here, because that section applies only to residential districts or residential portions of buildings. And as has been discussed at length in this hearing and in the briefs, the certificate of occupancy for the Chandler, the Hotel Chandler, is for a commercial hotel. And DOB is bound by Charter 645E to apply that certificate of occupancy for all matters set forth therein, including, in this case, its transient hotel use. Further, and again, as discussed earlier in this hearing, the appellant has not made a sufficient factual showing that the whole Chandler, Hotel Chandler is now used primarily for residential use, nor has it shown that any specific unit that could, that could potentially trigger the minimum court requirements is currently being used residentially. The latest affidavit in, that the applicant, the appellant, has submitted does not contain any concrete information that would convince, that should convince this board that any such unit is currently being used either permanently under the housing, under the rent stabilization law, or, or residentially. The appellant's arguments that permanent occupancy under the rent stabilization law makes this the Hotel Chandler into a residential building fail for the reasons that the rent stabilization law encompasses, specifically encompasses multiple dwelling law, Class B buildings, and does not make them into Class A, as further explained in our brief. The RSL laws and interpretive case law make clear that the RSL does not intend to require major changes to light and air on the mere chance that some of the time, some of its occupants may choose to become permanent residents, subject to the rent stabilization law's protection. The Commissioners had asked yesterday about the new building at issue potentially increasing the court size non-compliance. But as we've shown, the residential minimum court size requirements don't apply here since the hotel is, is commercial. There had also been a question at the executive session as to whether MDL 6716, I believe, would require the Hotel Chandler to register with DOB. I believe not, Commissioners, since this section applies to dwellings in which some units are used for transient purposes that would otherwise be prohibited. The case at issue, of course, deals with a legal transient hotel, in which some units arguably are being used for permanent occupancy, subject to the rent stabilization law's Moving on to the minimum space between buildings, the job at issue does not violate these, these requirements. With regard to the existing buildings on the merged zoning lot, any non-compliances created by the merger itself are permissible under the zoning resolution, as supported by BSA precedent outlined in our brief and by case law. While the zoning resolution prohibits zoning lot subdivisions that create non-compliances, there is no analogous language concerning zoning lot mergers. Regarding the distance between Hotel Chandler and the new building, zoning resolution 2371 does not apply to the hotel, since, again, since these provisions apply to residential portions of buildings, and as explained previously, the hotel is a commercial building. And in addition, the new building also does not violate these minimum space between buildings provisions, because the residential portions of these buildings, oh, I'm sorry, of the new building begin at a height that is above the Hotel Chandler. For the reasons explained here and in our written submissions, we respectfully request that the DOB's determinations regarding the subject building stand. I can answer any questions you have.
Yeah. I mean, my main question was about the multiple dwelling law as it applies to the Chandler transient hotel. And I understand DOB's position that the floor plate of the new, of the new building matches the floor plate in terms of that perimeter of the existing building, and so there'd be up to the sixth floor, no increase in the degree of non-compliance with respect to the Chandler Hotel windows. But I don't understand how, so the Chandler Hotel goes up, I think it's 20 stories. It, it continues. So I don't understand, those windows currently, or, yeah, those windows currently enjoy a view over, or enjoyed a view over a six-story building. So by the hotel continuing to rise, those hotel room windows now are facing a wall. And so now are facing a court. So why don't those windows, those walls, increase the degree of non-compliance as to the floors above the sixth floor, with respect to the multiple dwelling law and not the zoning resolution?
Right. Commissioner, are you saying that, that there is a multiple dwelling required court now that?
For a hotel.
For the hotel. And so these are the court requirements of multiple dwelling law, Section 26? Are those the ones you're referring to?
I think so. Yeah.
All right. Well, first of all, it's my understanding that lot, that there's not a court above the sixth floor of these buildings, because the building on Lot 71 is only five stories tall with a setback penthouse. And so this court area wouldn't be enclosed by four, by four walls past the fifth floor anyway. And in addition to that.
So you're saying the tower, you know, it's true that the drawings are a little, what we received, the drawings are a little hard to read. You're saying the tower is set much further back by the time it's at the sixth floor? Because that, that base that lifts it all the way up, that's traveling much higher than the Chandler Hotel.
Yes, Commissioner. No, I'm not talking about the tower. I'm talking about the building on Lot 71, that's.
The adjacent, the smaller building, right?
Yes.
But, but it's, I'm talking about the court. I think what's in, the subject here is the court that is above the little building on the side, right?
What I'm suggesting, Commissioners, is that it's not a court past the fifth floor, because, because the building on Lot 71 doesn't rise past the fifth floor.
To be a court, there needs to be, it needs to be enclosed on three sides, and after the fifth floor, there's no building there, so it's no longer enclosed on three sides.
Ah, okay. Where does that, so, because there's all, that little building is only one story, let's see, has to be enclosed on three sides. Oh, so once you clear, what you're saying is, once you clear the little six-story building next door, it opens to the street, and therefore there's no more court. Oh, I see.
In addition, it's my understanding that multiple dwelling law, Section 26, doesn't apply to buildings that were built before 1961, based upon multiple dwelling law 261. And as we've seen, the Hotel Chandler's certificate of occupancy isn't from 1951. That's an alternative argument. Other, other questions?
Oh, because that section exists subsequent to the building of the Chandler, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I like better that there's no court.
We've got that, too. Other questions, Commissioners?
I don't think so. Were there any others? I think the main thing was about the mechanical, just to clarify that. And obviously, to respond to what we'll receive, the conversion somehow of space above, avoid to accessory use, which I can't get my head around, but anyway.
We'll respond.
Any, any other questions from Commissioners? Okay, thank you very much. We have other speakers. Mr. Mazur.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jesse Mazur. I am a member of the Oxford child, and we appear on behalf of Madison 3031 Owners LLC in opposition to the instant appeal filed by Sky House Condominium. By, sort of throwing away my remarks, because sitting here today, it dawned on me that the appellant may have mistaken that in 22 Reed Street, city planning is no longer occupying this building. And it seemed very clear that their complaint is with zoning resolution rather than its interpretation. This is an area where we know that for the last 40 years, city planning has had the knowledge and the ability to limit height. We do it all the time, and they, and sometimes they don't do it. So this isn't something that is new news, and to now try to impose a height limitation, regardless if it's on the mechanical floor, the residential floor, any floor, is reading into the zoning resolution, which is specifically not the zoning resolution. And so I don't think it's a question of the authority of this board, or not the authority of this board, it's the clear meaning of the zoning resolution. I'm going to be joined today by Fatma Amir, who is, as you well know, is a former Deputy Commissioner at Department of Buildings, and has been working with us from the beginning of this process, to make sure that our building is compliant with both building code and building zoning resolution. And I will ask her to join in a moment. I just want to make a couple of points. Like you, I was a bit confused, because also thought from reading the papers, that the appellant was calling into question the CO of the Chandler Hotel. I think that was quite clear, in fact, in their papers. And I think, as much as we were bothered by the fact of the delay in getting this to a hearing, we did appreciate the board's concern. And I think it was a proper concern to make sure that the Chandler Hotel was, was here and was, was participating, because it was an attempt to overturn their C of O, which was, quite frankly, a cynical misstatement of the facts. The Chandler Hotel is a hotel, has been a hotel, for more than a half a century. One need only walk into it to know that. One doesn't, one doesn't wish to walk in. One could just go on their computer and look at various travel sites and see testimonials to the Chandler Hotel. It is really a waste of our time and the board's time to even have made that argument. At this point, rather than to go through my statement, which I think was made moot by the appellant's backtracking on their own arguments, I would like to ask Fatma to come up and make her presentation. And of course, we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Still, good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Commissioners. Actually, I'd like.
You have to state your name.
My name is, I'm sorry. My name is Fatma Amir. I am here on behalf of the new building at 15 East 30th Street. And I have been consulting with the building owner and technical team, you know, on various issues regarding the approval and review of the, of the plans. I would not read, because I think part of the package, our submission package, is my affidavit as a, as an affidavit. But today, I am going to be speaking based on my own personal knowledge and expertise, being at the building department as a First Deputy Commissioner all the way to, you know, to, you know, 2011, and previously, for the last 25 years before that, in different capacities. In this capacity as a First Deputy Commissioner, being the fact, you know, I think our, back then, the charter, the charter was amended to give the First Deputy more powers, actually, because at that time, our commissioner was not a licensed engineer or architect, to give, you know, to give the First Deputy the, the power to do, to be the technical policymaker, provide interpretation, being an authority on, you know, interpretation of the, all the New York City legal requirements applicable to buildings. You know, the, my affidavit is in the package, so I won't read it, but I'm going to be talking directly to the two points being disputed, mainly the mechanical floors, the first one, in 1210, you know. And I'm going to have to talk about the department policy and protocol in addressing that particular issues as systems evolved, mechanical systems evolved, added to the building, you know, mechanical system, not just heating and air conditioning, but over the years, fire protection systems, plumbing systems, heat exchange, there is a lot of energy and sustainability added, way more different types of, of systems to the building design as being mechanical. Large buildings can afford to provide floors that exclusively for mechanical uses. And that has many, you know, background, I'm not a mechanical engineer by training, but what we have seen over the years, because more efficiently, you would consolidate your system, because there is a lot of watch engineers, there is operating engineers now required by the building code, it means you would have your, you know, watch engineers or operating engineers supervise multiple systems at the same time. It means efficient, from an efficiency point of view, you consolidate the mechanical system in these few floors. engineers supervise multiple systems at the same time. It means, from an efficiency point of view, you consolidate the mechanical system in these few floors. By the zoning resolution, you know, 1210, 1210 does not, you know, address, you know, height or put limitation on a height. Building code puts always minimum height, but building code even doesn't address maximum heights. It means, for whatever reason, the 1210, neither the 1210, the zoning resolution, nor the building code, addresses maximum heights. Even clearances around equipment, you know, access clearances for maintenance purpose, for supervisory purposes, always also, it's a minimum requirement, minimum requirements from the building code and recommended requirements from the manufacturer of these equipment. Means, you know, in these issues, you know, regarding the mechanical equipment, 1210 does not, you know, exempt floor mechanical, floor spaces used for mechanical equipment or mechanical uses excluded from floor area, and there is no specific height limit. Over the years, when, as buildings start to become larger and the mechanical spaces and the mechanical system became more complicated and occupied, you know, full floors, it's consistently the department, and I'm speaking for myself based on my expertise, but I'm not, I cannot speak on behalf of the building department, they are present today, we have end up, you know, making proper interpretation to exempt entire floors, including eager stairs that penetrating, you know, these floors. These floors, you know, in this particular project is only accessible by service elevator. You know, passenger elevators don't stop there. It means that would make it more, you know, dedicated to that particular use. As far as the minimum distance on light and air requirements between the Chandler Hotel and the new building, again, as exactly the discussion before, I don't want to repeat myself. The Chandler Hotel, according to the CVO, is a commercial transient hotel, use group five. When you go to Section 33, you know, Article 3, Chapter 3 of the zoning resolution addressing commercial building, there is no reference to court requirements, there is no reference to legally required, you know, legally required windows, distance to legally required windows, or reference to distance between buildings. And therefore, when it comes to distance between buildings for our new building, it starts actually the requirements where our, you know, residential window starts. And our residential window starts above the height of any of the neighboring buildings. And, you know, therefore, it's the, you know, it is what it is, you know, like hotel while residential buildings in Article 2, Chapter 3 requires a 30-foot yard, hotel building consistently, the yard is only 20 feet. And that's, you know, no courtyard requirement. If I would address a hotel building, which is below 59th Street, hotel buildings to be converted to Class A, to be converted to use group two, you go to Article 1, Chapter 5, and you would be subject to Article 7B of the MDL. Totally a different thing. That, if you look at 7B in the MDL, would even allow these legally required window to open only to a 5-foot yard. That's how 7B looks like. It means, I'm not going to talk about, you know, the Chandler Hotel, the way it's located right now, the conditions right now are for them, yes, noncompliant, maybe as per the MDL, but they have the right to continue because it's legally existing. You know, again, reiterating the fact that combining zoning laws, now zoning laws are really, are beyond, are being formed beyond what the zoning resolution ever imagined. And it takes a configuration now, as long as you have contiguity, it takes a formation now that may create even open areas that cannot be defined by the zoning resolution. Therefore, the building department consistently made the interpretation, if whatever the building has, you know, I don't want to even use the term, but if the building had an existing court with that court, and I, you know, the new building, right, built right at the lot line, it has the right to do so. Because imagine if I have, if Lot 74 was not part of our zoning lot, I could have came, the new building in 15 East 30, build it as a separate zoning lot, build it right there, you know, on the lot line, nobody would say anything. And then I reach the height where I reach it, 50-story, 40-story, and then later on I come by. And nobody would say anything because we know the zoning lot combination by itself does not create new noncompliances. And as long as we're maintaining the existing noncompliances, whether to multiple dwelling or to the zoning resolution, we are, this is in line of the longstanding policy of the department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Any questions from the board? Thank you. Appreciate it. Are there any other speakers on this? Any speakers? Members of the public? Yes? Yeah, I thought there was someone. Please come if you want to speak on this. Do you have three minutes? Yeah, you have three minutes when the bell rings.
I'm Harry Bubbins. I'm with Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation, the largest membership organization in Greenwich Village, the East Village in NoHo. We have serious concerns about the appropriateness of the permits granted by the Department of Buildings for 15 East 30th Street and believe that the case filed calling for their rescission raises many compelling arguments. At issue in this case is the question of whether or not excessive amounts of space can be deemed, quote, "mechanical space" and thus exempted from the zoning floor area calculations, even when the space has been described as a, quote, "structural void" by the applicant and seems to extend far beyond what is necessary to house the mechanical equipment within. If limits are not placed upon such determinations, then the sky may literally be the limit for how high such structures may go, even in areas where sky-high construction was never contemplated nor is appropriate. The zoning text makes clear that enclosed space such as this counts as floor area except in certain clearly defined cases, including mechanical space. But if the space is being used predominantly simply as a void to lift up the structure rather than as genuine housing for necessary mechanical equipment, then how can it qualify as exempted, quote, "mechanical space"? Treating the FAR count is not the only harm which can be done by this practice. Placing excessive amounts of supposedly mechanical space on the lower portions of buildings can also have the effect of diminishing streetscapes and placing large blank walls at building lines, sucking the vitality and safety out of our streets. It is quite clear that the amounts of space devoted to exempted mechanical equipment included in this building was never envisioned by the zoning text. It's also clear that space which predominantly serves one purpose should not be counted as serving a different purported purpose. Enclosed space which primarily serves as a void to raise the height of a building is not defined as exempt from floor area calculations in the zoning text and should not be treated as such. The Department of Buildings must not be allowed to reinterpret the zoning text in such a way as to create a new category of zoning floor area space which was never intended and is not allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. This is Sean Corsendy from Landmark West. Landmark West is no stranger to this podium, but the circumstances are often reversed. An overreaching developer seeking your approval to build beyond what zoning and the DOB allows. Landmark West, again, standing here together with the community opponents fighting to rein in attempted abuses of zoning. Today, the community is appealing to you for relief of the DOB's interpretation of zoning based on information submitted by the developer. The tables are turned, but the issues are significantly the same. In our experience, both here and before other city agencies like the DOB, developer applicants spin the facts to their advantage and hope the agency would not probe too deeply. Unfortunately, in this case, this is what seems to have happened with the DOB. We're facing the same problem at 200 Amsterdam Avenue in our district, where a developer received zoning approval for a tower vastly taller than anything else in the same R8 district, even taller than anything on the Upper West Side or north of 60th Street in Manhattan, for that matter. This tower would steal light and air from its neighbors, creating and exploiting a development windfall where it should not exist. It's only been after the community, working with George James, challenged the DOB decision, that permits were put on hold. We hope the process will work as intended, and this case will not come before you, the BSA, because the DOB couldn't or wouldn't enforce law. If it does, we have confidence in the BSA, based on your disapproval last year of a developer's scheme to condominiumize the landmark former First Church of Christ Scientist. Who can forget the two laundry room, four bathroom, two-bedroom, subterranean, luxury apartment with kitchenette? We know you are attentive to the need to closely scrutinize developer claims. Another common thread between the cases is the testing of rights, the right and access of the existing community to assets of light and air versus those of an unnamed development yet to begin. Today's application before you is about many issues, but at the base, it's about nothing. 132 feet of nothing. Blank walls encasing nominal equipment, problematizing interior courts solely existing for profit. To allow the proposed building predicated on developer-identified structural voids to proceed without use clarification would be a mockery of the MDL. It would deprive the adjacent building's residents of light and air in violation of the zoning resolution. We need you to examine the pretenses upon which the developer filed their zoning documentation. Whether innocent or intentional, the facts do not change, and neither does the law. To cite the DOB's own propaganda, DOB employees are responsible for enforcing the New York City construction codes and zoning resolution for over 1 million buildings and construction sites. Our appeal is to you, for you to exist in the present and to hold the DOB to its own standards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Rachel Levy. I'm the executive director of Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts. Although this project is located outside our typical focus area of the Upper East Side, Friends found the tactics used by the developer in this case to be such a blatant misuse of zoning and their approval by the Buildings Department so damaging as a precedent for other developments citywide that we felt compelled to speak on this issue. In plans for 15 East 30th Street, its developers invented the concept of a structural void, a term never defined in the zoning resolution, to explain the largely empty space occupying 132 feet near the base of the building. Thinly veiled as serving a mechanical function, these spaces, in fact, primarily serve as a platform to boost residential units high into the air. As you know, historically, building mechanicals were located either in the cellar or on the roof of buildings. Because they were outside the primary active spaces of a building, they were logically exempt from floor area calculations. But the convergence of advanced construction techniques and intense market forces has led to a race for height by any means necessary. The exploitation of existing loopholes in the calculation of floor area has become dear rigor for ultra-luxury residential buildings, permitting unlimited ceiling heights to count as a single story and excess voids in mechanical spaces to be exempt from floor area calculations in their entirety. And these buildings are popping up in residential neighborhoods all across the city. There's 200 Amsterdam that Sean from Landmark West mentioned. There's also a tower on 88th Street and 3rd Avenue on the Upper East Side, which has a 34-foot void halfway up the building. There's also a building proposed on Cherry Street on the Lower East Side, where the first residence will not start until a height of 205 feet. These techniques are becoming the new normal for developments catering to the luxury market, and the BSA's decision on this case will have a far-reaching implication in shaping permissible development far beyond this one building. With residential units not even beginning until 150 feet in the air, the equivalent of a typical 15-story building, 15 East 30th Street is one of the first and most egregious examples of this trend. All of us know that New York City is growing, projected to reach a population of 9 million by the year 2040. Where to house this growing population is a recurrent issue in public discourse, and where to house people affordably has been a principal focus of this administration. How can we reasonably reconcile major concerns about where to house a growing population, on one hand, with the building department's approval, on the other hand, of a building where nearly one quarter of its volume is largely empty space? Not only does this proposal improperly exempt a significant amount of floor area, it is also irresponsible in the context of our growing city and the need for more residential units and a blight from an urban design perspective. The zoning resolution exists to guide development while promoting public welfare. In the high-pressure development landscape of a growing New York City, the Buildings Department's role as the primary interpreter of the zoning resolution is absolutely essential. But deliberate exploitation of the rules should not and cannot be sanctioned by the Buildings Department. We ask the board to overturn these improper permits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Marcel Negret. I'm a project manager at the Municipal Arts Society of New York, delivering the testimony on behalf of the society. The Municipal Arts Society of New York supports the appeal made by Sky House Condominium. M.A.S. believes that the OBS determination regarding the compliance of the proposed tower with the New York City zoning resolution is incorrect and that the Board of Standards and Appeals must find the building permit to be invalid. The developers of 15 East 30th Street have sought to construct five mechanical floors, compromising over 132 feet of height. This amounts to approximately 23% of the total tower volume being used for accessory mechanicals. And I agree with the question made by the Commissioners that it would be useful to have this number put in context, but I think we can all agree that 23% of the volume seems still a high number. The zoning resolution is clear as determination...
Volume, that's cubic.
Volume, yes.
Yeah, yeah. That's a different thing than square footage.
Yes, absolutely.
To be clear.
The zoning resolution is clear as determination with the exception of certain uses such as mechanical space. Enclosed spaces should count as floor area. However, the applicant described this area as a structural void, housing only a limited amount of mechanical equipment. M.A.S. questions what type of mechanical, electrical, or plumbing equipment demands such a staggering volume. Unfortunately, the practice of using structural voids to boost heights in building design has become a phenomenon in New York City. Many new towers as Sky sees voids as accessory building mechanicals with the intention of extending heights, improving their views, and ultimately increasing prices. Several developments currently under construction in the city have exploited this misrepresentation of the zoning resolution, perhaps most notably at 21757th Street, also known as Stonestart Tower, where 350 feet or more of its height is dedicated to structural voids. The OBS interpretation of permitted exemptions for contributing floor area under Section 1210 of the zoning resolution has resulted in the structural voids being applied in developments without any regulatory limit. This practice severely undermines a 12 FAR limit on residential buildings many by New York State Multiple Dwelling Law, which is intended to maintain a proportionality between the size of the lot and the bulk of the building. Without proper examination and the assessment that all such space is necessary for building mechanicals, M.A.S. believes the OBS is misrepresenting the zoning resolution and, in fact, making policy on behalf of lawmakers. Therefore, we strongly urge the BSA to examine the primary use of these spaces and whenever necessary, reject or resign building permits whose projects proponents seek to exploit the zoning resolution with regard to permitted accessory mechanical space. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other speakers? No? Thank you all speakers for coming. Thank you very much. So I guess appellant needs to come back. Where's our appellant? Okay, so there were a bunch of questions posed to you, and so you need to respond to them to clarify your argument. At this point, though, I just have to tell you I'm not persuaded by your argument. So if you want to try to persuade, you need to do it in the clearest possible way. Sometimes diagramming is the clearest way as opposed to just kind of going on and on. So I'm just suggesting you try to do it in a way where every section of the zoning resolution or other statute that you think is relevant is in your text where we're reading it along because otherwise, we can't, it's very hard to find out what you mean when you're pointing to a section, right? You know, actually bring in that little piece of the paragraph that's saying what you mean. And I'm saying this just because the papers were very hard to understand. And so when, for instance, Mr. Mazur was responding, he had to respond to every imaginable thinking that you might have had because he's defending his client's interest, right? Like in litigation, you just throw at everything and then you have to answer everything. But for the board, we need it to be very, very focused and very easily...
I would refer, obviously, supplemental submission is in order here, and I think the questions to be addressed are clear. With all due respect, I would refer the board and the Commissioners to the March 30th, 2017 submission from us as well as the July 21st submission. I think there were a number of submissions to the DOB, and appeals, and appeal documents, which I don't want to disown, but weren't drafted by my law firm, and I understand that. So I think I am clear on what you need.
Right, okay.
I believe that.
I don't want to have to go back and look at those. That's the whole point.
I think you should not have to look at them, yes.
Right. We reviewed all of those, many, many repeats of those because each time a ZRD1 was submitted, it got everything, and every time there was an answer, it got everything. it got everything, and every time there was an answer, it got everything. So we've reviewed those many times. Now, the specific questions need to be addressed very specifically, very clearly, concisely. Okay? Okay, so...
I would add that another reason to do that is that it's very likely we'll have a different, another new board member by the time this comes back. And while we have some very seasoned board members who may sort of understand references to other codes, even if that's not their expertise, we will have someone who may need that specificity to help them.
Yes, okay.
Yeah. And just with regard to the Hotel Chandler, who, you know, and your clarification of the CFO, you know, I just want to state again, our issue is not with the Hotel Chandler or its CFO, or revocation, or attacking it. And I don't know where that impression came from our papers. I'll certainly go back and look at it and make sure if there's anything to clarify, we do that. But I don't, I don't agree with that. And it certainly wasn't our intention, and so I'm glad that you clarified that today.
Okay. Okay, so, right. Okay, so I guess the first part is, we, I know we want to move this along quickly. The project is in construction. There was a lot of delay because of notice requirements to the Hotel Chandler, because Mr. Mazur and we all read that as an attack on the CFO of another property owner and depriving them of their rights without an opportunity to be heard, so...
I wish that had been asked of us. I mean, we did go through a number of revisions of our papers with a lot of careful...
Well, actually, we did, because we asked whether you notified the hotel, because they needed to have notice because their CFO was being put at risk.
That wasn't stated to us, and I apologize if that was the apprehension.
Well, that's why there was notice required to the Chandler. Otherwise, we wouldn't have notified them, because this would be a little private discussion amongst the developer and the challengers. But nevertheless...
He doesn't... He doesn't make.
Yes. Okay, never, yes, never mind that. So, but we do want to have you respond quickly so that both DOB and property owner can respond quickly as well, so that we can bring this to a decision, okay? So I would like, especially because it's summertime and all that stuff, so I'm wondering whether we could do this with two-week submissions of both you and then both DOB and property owner, two weeks to respond, so that maybe we could put this on for September 19? Is that good?
We won't have the space, and I'm, this space, and so I'm not sure that it's a good idea when there's so much public interest...
But we might have another, how about if we tried to locate another space with... How many people are actually here for this application?
There are lots. And that we...
In our room, we can do it.
And our building won't allow that.
Respectfully, I would ask for the quickest possible schedule, both for our submissions as well as for any follow-up hearing that you need.
Right. So September 19th is our first spot, otherwise we don't have until October 3rd, which is more, which is more delayed. So I'm wondering whether there might be a way for us to, for us to find a space that might be larger, not this one. Tony's the expert on this subject. No?
I mean, how many people, we could, there's two other cases?
Well, they don't have to sit in the same room during...
This is a public, yeah, I mean, in our security, in our building, it is...
Right. But we get the count? No, the count, no.
No. We don't have other spaces available.
They meet on a Tuesday. The other option is to do a different, have the hearing on Thursday, just for this.
Yeah, we could do that. But we'd have to check, I mean, I don't know if this space is available.
We don't know the space is available.
No.
Why can't we say that this is a subject we were finding?
No, because we're giving notice to all these people who are sitting here, and all of the people who might come, who listen, they have to know what date it's on.
And I understand the desire to be expeditious, but the, when you come to the Board, there's this, there's, there's other things on the calendar.
Yeah, yeah, but no, but the difference here is the developer didn't come to the Board. The appellate came to the Board, and so this is a construction project. They need to move on with their lives if that's what the decision is, et cetera.
Well, I'm just looking at your calendar, sorry.
Yeah. So October 3rd's the only one where we know we have a space. I'm just trying to think, the conference room, what? The 12th, it's too long of the hearing. We have a lot of items on the other days, right?
Yeah, those, those are packed hearings. The 12th and the 26th are packed hearings.
Okay. Well, the 22nd one, this is out. Sorry, the 22nd.
Well, I don't know that that's enough time to turn it around. No.
What, the 22nd doesn't have room on it, right? In any way, that's not enough time to turn around for us to read. Yes. 19th, they're using it. What if we did it on the 18th? Do we have this room on the 18th? The 18th is review session.
I know. We do it after review session, or we want to do it...
No, we don't, I don't believe we have...
The room in the afternoon.
That goes on from 1 to...
Yeah, City Planning has...
They start at 1, yeah.
All right. All right, it doesn't look like we have any choice, because there's no way to notice the location if we're flying around. We don't even know if we have a location. So I think we don't have any choice but October 3rd.
What?
The 26th, we have too much on the calendar. What?
21st.
I know. I don't know what else to do. We don't have a hearing room. This is the sort of, the city situation, right? And we can't come up with one...
There's enormous questions up here.
Yes.
I mean, you know, they can...
We can schedule it, and then we can postpone it.
They can tell the Deputy Mayor to give us our own space that they really want to.
Right. So how about, how about this idea?
I was just going to suggest that. Schedule it, this is Jerry Johnson, schedule it for the 19th, and if for some reason it can't be adjourned, then everybody that knows about the 19th will know the next day, because you can notice.
That's true. We could, in the hearing on the 19th, we could announce that it has to be adjourned until, and we could save a spot on the 3rd, just knowing, on October 3rd. It's just that it seems to me we'll be able to find a space if we make some phone calls. I don't know where. It could be in, I don't know where.
I literally don't.
Right?
I would prefer the 19th, September 19th.
No, I know you would. But we don't know where we're going to have it. It might be in your living room, right? So...
Maybe in the mechanical floor of the new condo. There's a lot of space.
Let's just say that the Executive, the Deputy Executive Director at City Planning's not going to be giving up their space for this hearing.
I didn't say that you were. That's a...
It's just because it's public. Anyone can come. These are organizations who can bring their constituents...
Okay, so that's what I'd like to do. I don't want to keep this, I'm sorry, this is going on too long. So, we're going to set it for the 19th. Everyone who's here, who's attending this, should know that there's a, there's a possibility we will not find a room for September 19th, in which case it will have to be postponed for the October 3rd hearing. But other, and so we'll be announcing that at the hearing, or actually before, at the review session the day before, okay? And on our website, we list the calendar and the location of the next hearing. So, so check on the Monday before, on the 18th, where the hearing is going to take place, and if it needs to be, if this case needs to be postponed, it will to October 3rd, where we're going to hold a spot, okay? So the briefing schedule is again, two weeks for the appellate, so that's August 8 submission, and August 22 submission for DOB and the property owner for a September 19 hearing, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you very much.
And for your testimony.
Thank you.
And now special...
Special...
Okay, so we're now saying...
Could you get the sheet for you?
I don't have the sheet. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, so, right.
Oh, everybody's...
Okay, counsel should stay. Counsel should stay. Jesse.
Jesse and Jerry are all people, sorry, sorry.
We have a little special hearing.
Yeah. Other counsel, did I leave anybody else?
Yeah.
No, members of the public.
We have all the others. Okay. Counsel, please stay. The others, you can leave, that's fine, because you're not regular.
This is a little special hearing for, yeah, so you can sit down. For the Deputy Commissioner.
Right. So this is a very special, special-order calendar hearing that we are going to have, and it'd be great if DOB would stay too, because it is a very special, special-order calendar hearing. And Fatma, we'd love it if you would stay, because you would get why it's so special. So, the reason, and Commissioner...
I believe you can sit now.
Yeah, they can sit in her former chair.
You may sit.
So this is a special, special, very special-order calendar hearing to honor Commissioner Eileen Montanez, who as of two weeks ago, unfortunately, sadly retired from her role as the professional engineer representing Staten Island, or from Staten Island at the BSA, where she had served amazingly for 10 whole years. And we wanted to take this opportunity for each of us to thank her incredibly for all of her service. She is a brilliant person, very beloved, and wonderful at what she does did, which was being, in addition to being a geotechnical engineer, which is her specialty, she became the engineer of all things to do with engineering, whatever they were, to be for, to enable the Board to be able to review cases that had to do with things like approaches for airplanes near airports and flood...
Acoustical details.
Acoustical details. And flood plane, she became our Appendix G flood plane expert, also an expert on the mitigation requirements for the lifting of the buildings, and also on all kinds of things to do with lower-density zoning districts. And this is completely unrelated to her skills as an engineer, it's just Eileen is intellectually curious on so many levels and is always digging in to everything. So I want to thank her for absolutely everything that she did, and I want to open it up to others on this side of the table to add any, any comments. So, take it away. Anybody?
Okay.
You would be the anybody. Charlie Brown.
I said before, and I'll say it again, it has been an absolute pleasure working with you for the past decade, and I will most especially miss your engineering expertise and the way in which it helped to inform my analysis for the B findings. I found it extremely helpful. And so, I wish you well. Enjoy your retirement, and have a wonderful time. Enjoy your dog and your husband. And your grandchildren.
I had mentioned this last time, and I'm really glad to see Eileen. When I joined BSA, it was really wonderful to see Commissioner Montanez here, because I had worked with her previously, and the amount of guidance that she provided initially in terms of the engineering aspect of it was extremely helpful. And as I keep saying, and I'm missing her a lot, because we shared a wall, and we used to talk over the wall and, and exchange ideas, so, so we were, I missed that there. Sometimes you need to talk to somebody to kind of make sure you, are you along the right track? And she was that person for me, to kind of vet through those issues. So I'm going to miss that, but I'm really happy for you.
Thank you very much.
Any other, any other volunteer speakers on this side of the table? Okay. So I'd like to know, since this is a special, very special-order hearing, I'd like to know if there are any speakers on this side?
I'll speak.
Yeah, and you have three minutes.
Well, I guess I don't have to, I can call you Eileen now, right? I can just say Eileen, right? I don't have to say Commissioner or anything. No, it's been a pleasure. I'm sure I speak for everybody. I looked at Jesse, because he's got probably the bigger mouth than I do. But you've really been a voice of reason for the past 10 years. You've held steadfast to who you are the entire time. We're in an industry and in a business on our side and a job on your side that sometimes gets very stressful, sometimes gets very animated, gets political, gets all these different things, and we all get very tense at times. And it was always a pleasure on this side to look and see your face and to know that even though we were disagreeing, that you weren't ready to kill me. So, I think that, that was comforting to know, the same way I think that Commissioner, that Vice Chair Shonda had those ideas to bounce off, that the feelings I think she was trying to convey was that same feeling, that you could talk to you about something, and even if you disagreed or you had a different idea, I never felt as if you were personally attacking anybody, but rather you were just trying to get to the truth of what was going on. And I think everybody in the room respects that, and you held very true to that the whole time you were here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
I want to say, I looked at the calendar, and I noticed it's going to be a long day for my former coworkers, so in consideration of that, I'll keep it brief. You know, I've been thinking about it, and I've had a wonderful experience at the BSA, and I was talking to somebody, and that person said to me, "Well, you know what you're going to miss? You're going to miss having an impact on your environment." And that's really true, that in whatever way it is, if it's, you know, landscaping and non-conforming use, or whatever it happens to be, you know, we always have our hearts in the right place of having a positive impact within whatever are required legal mandates.
Keeping that straight.
I'm going to miss that. I'll have to find something to substitute.
Are there any other speakers on this? No. Okay. Don't be shy. So normally, as the practitioners know, it takes a little while for you to get the resolution once we make our determination. But I would like to close this hearing and, and make a motion to grant the application, and then I will read the resolution. So this is an application from the entire staff of the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals on behalf of the City of New York and its citizens. The application, which is dated July 25, 2017, is to issue a proclamation to acknowledge and honor Commissioner Eileen Montanez, her 10 years of service, her 10 years of devoted service as a member of the Board of Standards and Appeals. The premises affected is Eileen Montanez, professional engineer, Commissioner from Staten Island, so maybe the premises affected is Staten Island. And the action of the Board, which we will hear shortly, will be, I'll tell you what happens after we do that. So I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley-Brown?
Aye.
And then I'd like to make a motion to grant, and I want to just hear a general aye, because we won't go through all the names, but I will read the names. So I'll motion to grant. All say aye?
Aye.
And so that is an affirmative on the part of Chair Perlmutter, Vice Chair Shonda, Commissioner Ottley-Brown, Executive Director Singer, Deputy Director Costanza, General Counsel Monroe, Deputy General Counsel Steinhaus, Secret Officer Banke, Project Managers Kirshenbaum, Levy, Mathias, Pranga, Ruffin, Segovia, Record Specialist Gonzalez, Jones, Rebus, Whitley, Administrators Lou, Milford, and Stenographer Benheim. And the resolution reads as follows. Whereas Commissioner Montanez has served tirelessly over the last 10 years as a dedicated member of the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals, and whereas during the course of these 10 years, Commissioner Montanez decided over 4,000 cases, not including an additional 4,000 build-it-back cases, which were considered in over 300 public hearings and 300 executive review sessions, and whereas reviewing that many cases probably translated, translates into close to, if not more than, 18,000 hours of case preparation and more than 6,000 site visits, allowing for some repeats, and whereas the BSA has relied on Commissioner Montanez, who is a licensed professional geotechnical engineer, for her careful review of the subsurface and structural conditions at the sites that have been the subject of BSA applications, and whereas Commissioner Montanez's analysis of these buildings' foundations and superstructure have been critical to the Board's decision-making process, and whereas in addition to being a geotechnical engineer, Commissioner Montanez took it upon herself to become the Board's engineer for all things engineering, including interpretation of noise studies, electromagnetic field, electromagnetic field studies, FAA approach analyses, vibration studies, hydrological studies, traffic... hydrological studies, traffic studies, parking studies, hazardous materials reports, brownfield cleanup standards, and so much more. And whereas having found that expertise in these disciplines was not sufficient to satisfy her curiosity, Commissioner Montanez also became an expert in predominantly built-up areas, lower-density growth management areas, low-density districts, and appendix G, to name a few, and whereas Commissioner Montanez never overlooked an opportunity for street trees, front yard mitigation measures, or substantive survivable perimeter landscaping, and whereas Commissioner Montanez was always meticulously attentive to the technical details of every project at B S A and carefully scrutinized the physical conditions that create unnecessary hardship and practical difficult, difficulties in developing a site in conformance with applicable zoning regulations, and whereas as a result of her meticulous and careful and rational nature, Commissioner Montanez often uncovered hidden issues in applications that no one else had realized were there, having won the Sherlock Holmes Award, and whereas Commissioner Montanez always provided invaluable assistance to project managers in deciphering the intricate technical details of land use applications prior to presentations to the board, and whereas Commissioner Montanez was always available to the B S A staff and was willing to dig into and explain complex details of cases, whether concerning engineering or structural challenges, or involving questions of zoning building code appendix G and other technical regulations, and whereas in addition to being an expert in her field, Commissioner Montanez is really fun, and an easy-to-talk-to and enjoyable person, and makes the B S A a great place to work, and whereas, whereas in her attention to detail, concern for the urban fabric, built environment, and quality of life, Commissioner Montanez has been, without anyone but us at the B S A knowing it, the great protector of Staten Island. And whereas, word has it that Commissioner Montanez's maintenance and organization of the hard copy sets when B S A was located at 40 Rector Street were the envy of the entire very grateful staff, especially the record specialists, and whereas Commissioner Montanez's desk plants were also the envy of the entire office, and whereas, word has it that Commissioner Montanez was always the first one at any office party, and whereas, based upon the above, the board and the entire B S A staff have determined that the evidence in the record compiled over 10 years of Commissioner Montanez's exceptional practice and service in the interest of the City of New York and the quality of its neighborhoods supports the B S A's findings. Therefore, it is resolved that the board and the entire B S A staff make the required findings to declare that Commissioner Montanez has been an absolutely incredible commissioner, board member, colleague, mentor, advisor, and friend, and will be sorely missed by all of the undersigned, all of the undersigned, and, and we dare say, the people of the City of New York, and on further condition, is a conditional approval, that Commissioner Montanez keep in touch with us while she pursues her many new and developing interests, that Commissioner Montanez visits us as often as she can to keep us abreast of her new life, that Commissioner Montanez attend as often as possible B S A outside-of-office parties celebrating holidays and other significant life events to which she will always be invited and enthusiastically welcomed, and that Commissioner Montanez accept the entire B S A staff's best wishes for a very happy, healthy, creative, and fun-filled next step into the world, adopted by the Board of Standards and Appeals, July 25th, 2017.
Yay!
There you go, your green sheet.
Thank you so much.
We only have 30 days to move on.
This is really an honor. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Okay, are we going to take a short break?
Yes.
Short break? Short break? Okay. Five-minute break, 10-minute break?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, we're back in the record, ladies and gentlemen. Item, we're calling a case out of calendar, item number 15, 26314 B Z, 1601 Oriental Boulevard, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board, I have the architect slash engineer with me today, Joel Neely. First to answer for your, is it above six feet from curb, on drawing A P 110, and a note at the bottom, it says average 7.33 N A D V 88 datum on that page.
Hold on, hold on. Yeah, let's get, let us get to the drawings.
Oh, it's on drawing A P 110.
This one's six.
There's a note at the bottom. Right. It talks about.
A P 110? And, and what about that note?
You asked about average grade, and is it above six feet from the curb?
Grade is at 8.8, is that what you mean?
It's, the average grade was taken, and it was 7.33.
Oh, okay, and then, this has to do with mitigation?
Yeah, and then you said, does mitigation measure, are mitigation measures needed, and on drawing A P 101, there's a raised front yard and tree or shrubs of a minimum three feet high as a mitigation.
Okay.
And we found a discrepancy on the plans which we're going to, we're going to fix from the previous plan.
Okay, so, where do we find the, so that's A P 101, where do we find the raised front? Oh, just in that one little spot.
Yeah.
Is that qualified? So then, raised front yard, what's the elevation of the walkway versus that planting area?
The walkway's eighteen.
You have to identify yourself when you speak?
Joel Neely, I'm the applicant at the building department. The raised planted area is 18 inches above the walkway.
And what about the, above the walkway? So the, does that actually count that way? I mean, I understood that the way the mitigator is supposed to work is, it's essentially raising the apparent grade in front of the building so that it doesn't look-
It's only a certain, it's a minimum area.
It's a minimum area, so even though you're dropping back down again. Okay, without more investigation, I think we have more issues with this anyway, so let's go on with the other questions.
And it also, it appeared that the rest of your questions were regarding height, so we brought the architect to address them.
So I understand the, your concern with regard to the height. I need to point out, I think you're, you're aware of this, that it does, it actually meets the requirements, it's within the regulations, but I understand the concern. What I've done is I can go back to my client, there are some issues we have to resolve, I can probably lower the building about two feet, one foot at the second story because there's a nine-foot ceiling height between the second story and the third story, I can lower that to eight, and I can lower the ground story ceiling height, probably to six-foot-eleven from seven-foot-eleven. But there is a, an entrance at grade, and to lower it more than one foot at grade would make the entrance impossible to use.
So you have, well, so for example, we have another case that you really should look at because it's a brilliant solution for how to deal with these raised conditions, where the seller, the thing that's called a cellar actually became, in their case, a crawl space, and the transition from outside to upstairs is, is really elegantly handled so that you don't have a lot of usable space at the rear that's just empty height, right? And it enables the massing of the building to be much lower, and in the end, probably less trouble for the owner and less expense. So, because right now you're entering through your new extension, but the rear of that cellar level isn't, doesn't have any functions, not even labeled, right? And you're not using it for parking, so, so, because that's another way that we see it, we see the front used for parking, which is allowed, right? So the inside of the cellar used for parking, and then an entry inside of the cellar up into the building, and then the balance of it not needed. So the other solution that we're going to be seeing in a little bit handles it in a split-level way, and that reduces the height and mass of the building. And, you know, because this is, because we need to look at neighborhood character, and on this particular street, this building is towering over the neighbors, right? So the close, there's another little building just next door that's taller than everybody else, and you're way taller than that one. So if you're going to rely on something about neighborhood character, you'd be closer to that one that's next to you, not a couple of feet closer, because you actually got grooved between your last submission and this one. So if you could, you know, we can point you to the other application, just to give you some ideas.
No, I, I understand, the only question I have, you, you mentioned the split-level condition. So you would, because the ground floor has an entrance at that, at that story, unless I add a front porch with a set of steps, split-level is the only way we could use this, because you need to have enough headroom to get in to the building.
Right, that's the way they handled it.
So, okay, so you're, you're suggesting that a split-level solution might be acceptable?
Yeah, so the split level, then, you can use that as a way to reduce the apparent mass of the building, right? So that you're not towering.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Needlessly, yeah, okay, great. Okay, and then, what else? I don't know if we had any other. Also attic height, nah. Okay, I think that's, that's the gist of the whole thing, is the height.
Okay.
Okay?
So we'll talk to the client about the height.
Okay, great. So are there any speakers on this? All right, so, our next available hearing is October 3rd, right? So that would mean, and it gives you enough time to really work on this with your client, so that's a September 13th submission. Okay?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, back in order of the calendar.
Yes, we're calling back in, new cases on the appeals calendar, item number seven, 2017 4A, 3039 Victory Boulevard, Staten Island.
Thank you. We have this. Elise Foladere, on behalf of the applicant for Merrick Latnick D C, regarding corrections to the statement, the statement of facts will be revised to state that the subject lot area is 6,217.5 square feet with 49.57 feet frontage on Victory Boulevard and 107.77 feet of frontage on Seatra Avenue. We will correct the statement to clarify that the applicant submitted a report dated June 17th, 2016 to the D E C for groundwater testing completed at the site and has received a letter in response dated June 20th, 2016, closing the spill.
Right, that was submitted into the record, right? So the spill closure letter was submitted into the record.
Yeah, in the notice of comment.
Yeah.
So that's regarding your next question, that letter. The D E C spill is closed, and it was submitted in the notice of comments, and the applicant will be hiring an engineer for the excavation process. And in accordance with page five of the negative declaration for non-petroleum, a health and safety plan will be devised and approved by the New York City Department, the D E P, the Department of Environmental Protection before the commencement of any onsite activities. And that, that same piece of the negative declaration is referred to on the plan, and is explained-
About the remedial action plan, that's already referred to on the plan?
Yeah, we have a negative declaration that we submitted, and then we refer to it on the plan, so you know that we will be complying, but he has not dug up anything yet, so that's why he needs this approval first to begin his statement.
Right.
The digging process.
That's a question for Tracy. Is that something that's okay? Do we need to wait till there's a rap or anything like that?
No.
Or okay, because there's an E designation?
An E designation.
Okay.
And this is a G C L.
Right.
Yeah, and the letter says that just, future remedial action will be undertaken immediately if subsurface contamination is encountered during excavation, we will be in full compliance of all applicable laws and regulations to ensure health and safety of the site and surrounding neighbors, from the applicant.
Any questions, comments from the board? Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so as long as we know that you're in compliance with the, with the E designation and made notes on the plan, so the O B is aware of it, I think that's good, right? Are we okay environmentally?
Yep.
Okay, so then I would like to make a motion to close. Do you want her to close immediately? Is there-
No, I just want to make sure that there's the three-
It said E designation, it said about the petroleum and the- Asthma, noise, air quality.
I didn't remember.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Submitted the negative declaration, and all those parts were referred to on the plan.
Yeah, right, and yeah, so, yeah, the plans have a good note that says all of the criteria on it, which normally we would ask them to put on, but they put it on.
We, we got it ahead of time.
Yeah. Good. The "we" being Tony. Okay, so then I would like to make a motion to grant. Oh, I thought I closed. Okay, motion to close then.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on, merely on the condition that all the environmental requirements of the E designation are complied with. Okay, so grant to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Zoning calendar, item number eight, 2215 B Z, 219 26th Street, Brooklyn.
Is anyone here for this?
He was here. Yeah, he had to leave.
Oh, he had to leave, okay, so it's a deferred decision, but I don't know for how long.
He said to the October 3rd, which is fine.
Okay, how are we looking on October 3rd? How many?
It's 12 cases.
And we're just waiting on the environment.
Yeah.
Okay, and that sounds like enough time?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
The submitment.
Yeah.
Well, the submission is from D E P, so, right?
Yeah, I mean, if they give it to us on October 2nd, it's fine.
Right, okay.
Item number nine, 2016 4147 B Z, 571258 Place, Queens.
Okay, so, yeah, hi. So we closed this, but we'd really like to understand what happened, so I'd like to make a motion to reopen. You're going to request withdrawal, correct?
Yes.
So for a motion to reopen.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
All right, Van Banton from Shell and Lobel, on behalf of the applicant, last night, they submitted a request to withdraw without prejudice based on financial needs of the, of the applicant. Moving forward, I believe they needed more information to provide, and it's been costly for the applicant.
Sorry, you don't have the details, is that what it is?
Correct. At this moment, I could-
Can you find them out, and we do a second call?
Yes.
Because we're concerned that the applicant may be withdrawing, and this isn't in the best interests of the city, H P D, the applicant, and we'd like to understand what the additional costs are that they're concerned about, because they've gone all the way to this point where we were only waiting for one thing, and we were ready to vote, and I think the vote was heading towards the favorable, right? So it's a very confusing time to be withdrawing without understanding what the reason is.
I would forward that along, I would forward.
Has the applicant submitted any application to H P D for any financial?
I will have to find out.
Yeah, because that's the thing, so it's an H P D project where normally there would be H P D funding to develop this housing, there, there could be, anyway.
Could be, yeah.
Or at least it's available, and so maybe the owner's not aware that that's a possibility because the caveats were that it needed to remain as affordable housing, right?
Right, and it's still in place till 2026, so unless the deed is modified, which I'm not sure if H P D's aware of it, and what-
H P D was undergoing a deed modification, but they're not-
And what was going to be the requirement of, or change to the deed, do you know?
That they could develop, that they could have the- That they could develop, that they could have the transfer of property, which they had done without the HPD approval before.
Right, but did, did the deed allow them to build on the site as a priority? Could be the continuance of a residential use on that site?
It was a continuance.
So that would not have changed. So if that, that requirement still would remain with the modification of the deed, is your client aware of that?
I will speak with the other attorneys working on this as well.
Because there would be no recourse, other than going through BSA, because you've exhausted the city planning option.
Right, and, and there you are, stuck with a manufacturing district where you're required to build residential, which is very strange, so the only place that, the only way that this site can ever be developed, then, unless HPD removes its restriction, which is unfortunate, is to come to the BSA. Right, so far they haven't.
I haven't received any, any information from that deed, but this was my understanding from before.
And they can't even sell it, right? Because I mean, they have to go to HPD to sell it. I mean, they did that once.
But it has no value, and how can you sell it if you're not allowed to build anything? It's the ultimate BSA.
Have you talked to, have you talked to?
We could address HPD? I, I specifically have not, I'm, another attorney's working on it in the office, I will have them do a submission if that's what the board requests.
So I, what I would recommend, because we're very concerned that this land therefore will lay fallow, and that's certainly not in the interest of anyone, especially the property owner, for HPD, for the city.
And you might be in violation of the deed, you might therefore in violation of the deed also.
Right, so, and the, and the property owner may not realize there's, there's forms of relief, or maybe the things that he's, he or she's being requested to do, there might be some way of, you know, getting help with that, or, I don't know. And so I would suggest that rather than withdraw today, you go back and, we have a conversation with HPD, with their, the project manager there, and we clarify exactly what, what's going on with this, and maybe put this, you know, delay any decision on how to move forward on this. Okay, so we could put the delay on any decision to the September 19th?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's enough time, and, and then we need to reach out to HPD, maybe they can explain to us what's going on, but you need to find out from your client exactly what the issues are.
All right, we'll do.
Okay.
I'll forward that along, thank you.
Is there any submission?
No, because I think it's more like, oh, for the submission.
For the client's issues.
I, I'd have to say, like, right before the 19th, because it's not like we're studying something, we're trying to understand the issues about whether this should be withdrawn or whether.
And we'll reach out to HPD.
Yeah, and so they, their submission, which they might not want to have in writing, frankly, if it's, if it's really, if it's something where the client doesn't really want to reveal their finances, maybe it's a conversation between you and our counsel, and to just explain what's going on. Yeah, because if it's personal finances, that's not normally something that the board considers, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number 10, 2017-1BZ, 570 Melrose Avenue, the Bronx.
Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of the applicant.
Aye, so I think everything is in order, and we already closed this, right? So for a motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 11, continued hearing items, item number 11, 9114BZ, 3420 Bedford Avenue, Brooklyn.
Eric Knowles, Fox Rothschild, for the applicant.
So you wanted to adjourn this to October?
Yes, but actually, I mean, the, the client's still working on coming up with a design that reports to the board's comments back in February, and something that comport with the neighborhood, so October 17th or November would be.
Let's make it later.
Okay.
So how about the only one available in November, because it's, there's only two here, is November 14?
Okay.
With a submission October 18. Right, one, one, sorry, October 25th, October 25th.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, item number 12, 10415BZ, 4452 Broadway, Manhattan.
Okay, so is counsel here for this? So this is an interesting thing, where, um, sorry? Should I go outside and look? Yeah, go outside and just verify, counsel is nowhere to be seen.
Rosenberg, is that Rosenberg or Madison?
Yeah.
Hold on, who is it?
We don't know.
Well, no, it is, we do. It's Juan Reyes.
Oh.
One dollar, five dollar?
Come on.
We didn't actually send any.
You should have.
We didn't send any.
Should have.
No?
No?
No gambling on cases.
Okay.
Oh, no, no, you won the bet.
Oh, sorry?
Really? Yeah, no, no.
Oh.
There's no discussion.
Oh, okay, so no sign?
Nope.
Nope, okay, so here's the thing with this case, they submitted, our first hearing was in December of 2016, and we took it off calendar because of all the comments that were given by the board in December, and then we received, we took it off calendar at the February 28 hearing, where we had a lot of more comments.
Because they lost their, their counsel.
No, no, I'm telling the story, and so they, we took it off calendar, February 28, because they eventually informed us that they had replaced counsel. We, we set it on for today's hearing, reached out to counsel repeatedly, also in writing, counsel submitted nothing, and then we also said, well, if you're not ready with a submission on the revised project, then at least submit a request for an adjournment. They did not submit a request for an adjournment, and then told us, I think on the phone, that they would attend this hearing to tell us what's going on, and so they didn't attend the hearing.
Well, it was given to them in writing. They were instructed to either attend this hearing and give us an update, or give us an update in writing along with no German.
Okay, so they did none of the things that we were instructed, they were instructed to do either in writing or on the telephone?
No.
And so I don't know, except to say that they're absent from the prosecution, and therefore I would like to make a motion to dismiss this for failure to prosecute.
You have to close it, right?
Yeah, well, so we'll close it, but I would like after that to make a motion to dismiss. So on a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to dismiss for failure to prosecute.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
Aye.
Okay, strange things, okay.
Item number 13, 17814BZ, 263 McGinnis Boulevard, Brooklyn.
Van Banton again from Shell and Lobel's office, on behalf of the applicant, the applicant requested an adjournment because of the Phase Two. It's almost near, near completion, but still DEP would require at least 30 days, so we're requesting an adjournment to October 3rd.
Okay, so by then, would you get, so you're nearly complete, for argument's sake, submit by when?
Can I bring up Hyrum for a second?
Good afternoon, Hyrum Rothbuck.
Hi, just because we're, I think we closed this already, so we just wanted, we didn't? No, it's still open, okay, sorry.
We have, in, in the next week, we have a complete environmental submission that we're going to be making to the board for DEP, and we feel that by October 3rd, DEP will have reviewed and signed off on, on hazardous materials, and the board will be able to render a decision on the application.
Okay, all right, it sounds like enough time?
That's enough time. Yeah, it's a 20-day review, and even if there's a little back and forth, you know, on something, there's still some room for that.
All right, so then if October 3rd is the hearing date, then submission needs to have occurred, like you said, of right away, right? And then the only thing we'd be waiting for is DEP response, right?
We'd ask that the board consider granting the application if DEP has signed off before, before the 3rd.
If everything's in order, a closed grant is always possible.
It's great.
So at the moment, though, we don't know what.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So submission date?
We don't really have a submission date, because it's a DEP response, so they have to continuously respond to DEP's comments.
I thought you were submitting something next week.
No, but that's, that's environmental submission, so.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, we don't normally give a date on that.
We still have October 3rd.
Yep.
Did we confuse you?
Nope.
Item number 14, 22414BZ, and 22514A, 1534 Victory Boulevard, Staten Island, we have a request for an adjournment.
Hi, Eric Plannick, yeah, for one week, I think, we're on the calendar for next week, I believe.
Oh, I see.
Oh, excuse me, not next week, the week after next, August 8.
I held a spot for this one, I don't remember the reason why, but.
What was the reason why?
The applicant, our client is out of town right now, we didn't know that when we got scheduled, and he very much wanted to be in attendance.
Okay, all right, so we are, you already submitted, right?
We've submitted, there's nothing new, we spoke to, I think, Ms. Mathias yesterday, if we want to discuss it on the record.
Yeah, we asked about the, we asked, a comment came back to me that about the parking, an analysis on a parking study, I think is what it's.
Right, and actually a traffic consultant says.
Based on the parking study, no? No, I'm sorry, there was.
No, I think.
Victory Boulevard.
So the, based on the revised traffic and, and the plan.
Sorry.
It seems twenty, total of 24 parking spaces will be provided onsite, and, and the report indicates that there will be a peak period of demand at, of 28, so that means there'll be reliance on, on-street parking for those remaining parking spaces. I just want to make sure that the document clearly indicates and provides adequate data to support that those four, four parking spaces can be provided off-site, or given the nature of the operation, it can be accommodated without creating any traffic or other encumbrances on the, on that Victory Boulevard, because it abuts the school, there are school buses parked there, so you just need to kind of clarify that.
Do you want it to write it in writing, or do you want to?
Yeah.
Yeah, just to correct the submission, right?
Sure, if I may, good afternoon, Commissioners, Frank Philichulta with Stonefield Engineering. I certainly understand the question, this situation is a little bit unique than your, your typical project that starts from the beginning and is proposed. This is an existing site that is not being increased in terms of gross leasable floor area at all. It's not changing. The only thing we're doing is improving the onsite internal circulation and the way the parking is laid out. We're actually going from 16 parking spaces to 24, and not doing anything in terms of increasing demand. So we identified, when we first did our parking study last year, that people are using the streets, that's happening now, they're using it, it's working, it's going to be less in the future by virtue of the improvements we're making.
So you'll alleviate the issue with the on-street parking.
That's correct.
But, you know, to, to be clear, this isn't an application to waive parking spaces.
No.
This is an application to, for a variance, to extend the site over and put more parking, which started off wanting 44 spaces, and now is only, is, I shouldn't say only, and now is showing 24 spaces, so it's a really, and it's not required by zoning to have these 24 spaces, the original 17 were what was required by zoning, so they're compliant. So, so the question here is, is there, is there an A case? Is there an A? And is there a finding? And, and, yeah, have they established that they can support the, the imposition on the residential site that they've merged with, right? So I, I don't really, I don't really know what the parking demand study tells us, actually, other than, because, other than they're establishing that they need, needed more parking spaces, right? Which I think has already been established in, generally, in terms of us seeing the photographs and that kind of, and their, their testimony that they need more parking spaces.
That was the other question I had, because if today those two residential buildings could be built as a.
Right, are we done?
Yeah.
Right, so. Well, now we're talking about the A finding and the B finding, right? And, and Commissioner Oatley-Brown hasn't reviewed financials, because this was an adjourned case, so we shouldn't really be.
But on that note, that's okay, we get carried away sometimes, if it's in zoning,
of all things. If it's okay with you, we'll ask Frank to put together a letter just addressing what you just spoke about, just for next week's hearing, we'll.
Just clarify that.
Yeah, we'll provide that, and then we'll get into the other stuff next week. Thank you, thanks for bringing it up.
All right, so it's adjourned till?
August 8.
August 8, and if you're going to submit that supplementary stuff, it really should be done immediately, so by Friday.
Sure, we can get that through.
Otherwise, we wouldn't have.
A brief letter.
Okay, so it's Fridays, uh, 28th, yeah. Okay, now let's make. Number 16, right? We're now on 16, because we did 15. 21615BZ, 205 West Fordham Road, the Bronx.
Hi, Eric Plannick. So we attended a review session yesterday, but I was getting mixed signals. I heard close, I don't know what the board is intending or meaning by close, so I, I'll leave it to the board to express to us what your feelings are about our submissions, and then hopefully we can try and respond.
Okay, so what I meant by close was, we've had a lot of hearings on this, this will be the fifth hearing, or this currently is the fifth hearing, so I think we've given you and your consultants plenty of opportunity to make their cases, and I do appreciate your efforts to work with DOT to try to figure out something that would be, let's say, safer. But for one, some of the recent submission that refers, so for one, the traffic analysis never took into account two things that we learned recently from city planning, which was the development at 233 Landing Road, immediately adjacent to this site, on the same side of the street of Landing Road, and also the intention on the part of city planning and the Parks Department and so on, to provide access to the waterfront, specifically using the pedestrian route on Landing Road to get there. And so certainly the development at 233 Landing Road was common knowledge, because they pulled a building permit, they have HPD and lots of other approvals, city planning was aware, and so that never got calculated in when we expressed concerns about pedestrian circulation there. I specifically was concerned about it because of access to that park, and when, my experience with that site has been, there's quite a lot of circulation on the sidewalk for access to that park. And then, when the pedestrian study was revised recently, the data on the 233 Landing Road was incorrect, so it talks about 140 units of 3,000 square feet of retail. Meanwhile, widely publicized on the internet is what the actual project is, which matches the Schedule A and HPD's website and the architect's website, so everybody seems to be in agreement that what's being built there is 136 units of housing plus 200-bed homeless shelter, which means a lot more pedestrians on that sidewalk than was anticipated in the recent pedestrian study, and the pedestrian study didn't seem to take any interest in all of those 170 peak hour pedestrian trips at all, having argued previously that not that many people are going to walk on that side of the street, so not to worry if there's three curb cuts and cars turning and leaving and turning and leaving in a truck and all of that sort of stuff. So the reason for closing was, I think we kind of heard all of the arguments, another layer was added, and it makes me personally more concerned than I was already that this is the wrong site for a gas station requiring three curb cuts and all kinds of special, special installations on West Fordham Road in order not to kill people. So, and not to, you know, what is it called, Operation Zero or something like that?
Yeah, I think it's Vision Zero, to reduce traffic fatalities.
Vision Zero.
Yeah, there were just a bunch of fatalities over the weekend, I think a skateboarder was killed on the street.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a lot. So if I, if I'm hearing what the board is saying correctly, the special permit that we're making before the board right now, the board's concerns are that a as-of-right, affordable and homeless development that's being built at Fordham and Landing Road would cause our use to potentially kill pedestrians. Is that, is that the concern?
Well, it's not exactly potentially kill, it's to.
Or, I mean kill, I meant injure, the pedestrian could potentially be injured. The pedestrian could potentially be injured.
More and more pedestrians on that side of the street walking past the curb cuts that, of which there are many, with a lot of traffic going in and out, and the subject of the pedestrian conflict having been discounted throughout these hearings, because there weren't very many people who walked that way, was the argument given. Meanwhile, I observed myself, many people walking that way, so it just depends on what time you go.
So it's really, what I'm hearing now is, it's just about people on foot on the sidewalks, is giving the board, are there any other concerns that the board has that we should be aware of, other than the pedestrians on the sidewalk?
Well, we were concerned also about the traffic patterns. We were concerned that it was...
Right, right, but we have a letter that the board has in their possession right now from the Department of Transportation, who's the agency in the City of New York that's charged for the safety and the protection of people within the roadways and the movement of cars, and they've been working with our traffic engineers, Frank, who just pronounced his name, and I didn't know it was supposed to be pronounced, so I'll call him Frank So we've been hard at work with them, and also with Frank as his partner, and they've been working with DOT for years, and I asked them this very question, because I was hearing pedestrians, and they've got 20 years of combined experience at DOT, and they said clearly if DOT had issues with pedestrians, they would call it out if there was an issue.
But DOT may not be aware of all the planned development and...
But the chair just said it's common public record. We were just actually chastised for not having all the common, that the private applicant was just actually told that they don't have the public record right, and then I just heard a litany of sources of which that information is available, and I was told that we should have that information. So, I'm getting just a little confused. I want to just, we have, let me just back out of it where we're coming from. There are tremendous amounts of business deals and dealings that have been made on this site between national corporations and private people, and this application is very important to everybody involved. So, we are sitting here on our side with a whole team making the application, with a whole team of attorneys from a national corporation on the other side, asking us, why is the Board of Standards and Appeals upset with an application that's a special permit? They went through Section 73211, the attorneys for the oil company that are coming in went through it, they reviewed the special permit legislation, they called us up, they said to us very clearly, we were on a conference call, we don't understand it. The special permit doesn't make any mention of pedestrians. We need all the findings of the special permit. We vetted it at length for months with the agency, they actually yelled at Frank, and they said he didn't do his job. He said, "Did you, did you not meet with DOT?" And Frank said, "Yes."
I'm going back to my notes, and I, and you should go back to the hearing, I think at the 10, 13 review session, because I have it in my note as one of the questions.
October, October review session?
October review session, because in my note I had that there is a development that is being proposed on Landing Road, and that includes condo and supportive housing on Lot 25. And so if I have it on my note, that means I would have raised it during the hearing.
Right.
So it's not, this is the first time you're hearing?
I'm not debating, I am not debating.
We have raised it, and I think, as yesterday Commissioner Otley Brown mentioned it, we have been concerned about the way the curb cut was laid out and the extensive amount of time the vehicles would have to maneuver to get through and would be sitting on the sidewalk and impacting the pedestrian flow.
So the pedestrians, okay, I just want to be clear, because we were asking...
And that was iterated...
That's fair enough. Listen, you're entitled to your views on it. There are other entities and people that we're working with that wanted to make sure that that's the issue, because they accused Frank and his team of not discussing it with Department of Transportation, and they've told me that Department of Transportation would raise it if they felt it was an issue, and they have all the same information that you're available to, that's available to us. So I thank you, Madam Chair, for listening, everything. You mentioned that it's the fifth hearing, Department of Transportation has looked at it, but they haven't commented on the, on the issue with the pedestrians. There's the Landing Road application that DCP spoke about. So let's maybe start with the city planning communication, because I know the board would like the chance to try to convince you one last time, and if we can't convince you, then we'll have to do whatever the client wants us to do. I guess the first place to start is with the city planning letter. It's dated May 31st. Despite it being dated May 31st, I think we just received it a couple of days ago. Is that correct? Didn't we just just go...
Yeah, we also...
Yeah, so everybody's really been kept in the dark on a letter that if, I don't know if the staff has had a chance to diligently review it, it's kind of riddled with errors. And the fact that it's riddled with errors, I think, should cause a little bit of caution, because so far we've been told that we're not doing our due diligence, we don't know about projects around us. And I have a letter here from the Bronx Office of City Planning dated May 31st that says that the first bullet point, you can read along with me, "DCP rezoned the site in 2008 from a C8 zoning district." Wrong. Wrong. It was an R71C24 zoning district. And the board has in their possession, find it, the BSA resolution, which clearly said that it probably was somewhere. Here it is. And you have this in your record as well. "Dated 10/22/02, granted on condition, calendar number 15202BZ, 205 West Fordham Road, whereas this is an application for a special permit pursuant to 73211 and 7803 to permit in a C24R6 zoning district the proposed construction of an automotive service station." So my first comment is that our clients were very strenuous with me yesterday. They feel that they are being put in a situation for a political reason and not pursuant to the rules. And they were the ones that called out the error in the first bullet to us. We didn't catch it, our clients did.
Political?
And they said to us, the attorneys from their office, said, "It's clear to me that they're trying to paint you as trying to do something new here that was never allowed before, just from that first bullet." And as a matter of fact, what city planning then said, not only did they say it was a C8 zoning district, in that same bullet, this is like the Sherlock Holmes you were talking about before with the resolution that we said to Eileen, right? She always found things that weren't there, so I really wish she was here, because if she would have read this...
Not that weren't there, that no one else found.
Right, so nobody, right, but I wish she was here, because nobody else, nobody else found it. This came from the highest agency for planning in New York City. It came from the top, it went through the board, went through our office, and my client discovered it. So that same bullet, the first error said, gives the illusion that the city changed it from what was allowed to something that's not allowed, is wrong. And then they even go so far in the next, in that same sentence, with a C24 commercial overlay which prohibits these uses. Now, let's go to the word prohibits. The word prohibits means you're not allowed to have it. A special permit, Madam Chair, you are perhaps the most experienced chair ever. A special permit, as you know and as your legal counsel knows, is in fact, it's given the presumption that it's allowed provided you meet the conditions. That's the case law. There's a presumption of approval provided you meet the conditions. Yet the city planning agency said that a C24, this commercial overlay, doesn't allow it. That would give a reviewing body the impression between the C8 zoning district being changed, between the erroneous comment that a C8 zoning district was changed to a C2, and then that we're not allowed to have it at all, doesn't make any mention of Section 73211, which has been around almost since the zoning resolution was enacted. So it seemed to my clients, who are pretty smart attorneys working for a major oil corporation, as they said, that seems like a pretty self-serving comment to railroad us. Then they went on. My client didn't stop there. They kept going with this memo, because the clients, everybody involved, both the lessee and the owner of the property, clearly feel that they're entitled to this use. And what they were very upset about was that first blow from city planning in the C8 zoning district was not correct, the C24 was not allowed was not correct. Then it goes on in the second bullet. "The 2014 Department of City Planning released its Sustainable Communities Bronx Metro North Study, which included recommendations..." Now, a reviewing body who's reviewing this doesn't know from a recommendation from a report, from a zoning resolution. But you do, and I do. You know, and I know, because we've been in meetings over and over again, the city planning, just one the other day, where we were upset about a recommendation, and you know what we were told from the Brooklyn Office of City Planning relating to the Brooklyn Innovation Plan, where we're trying to do some work over there? They're doing a study right now. You know what they told us? It's just a study. It doesn't mean anything. Nothing means anything until it's actually adopted. This is just our idea. So, the letter from city planning goes from the first paragraph, and I'm not blaming city planning, I don't know why this was created like this, but as my client said to me, it looks like it was created with a purpose in mind to dissuade people from granting this. And as my client said, "It's a three-year-old study, coming on a four-year-old study that's never been adopted, that is now being used as the basis of this site." That's okay, we can keep going with that, even if everyone wants to point to a four-year-old study that hasn't been implemented. The next item that I wanted to raise up is the last bullet in that letter. And that's, this goes, again, directly to what Madam Chair and the conversation we were just having, because I think the conversation we're just having is clearly, you said to us over and over again, "It's the pedestrians, it's the pedestrians, it's the pedestrians." We have the sign-off, draft sign-off, which we've spoken with Tracy Bernanke of your staff, who's your lead environmental, SECRA administrator, I'm just trying to make everything clear, so we're all clear. She has that in her possession, it was emailed this morning, a draft, where they signed off on the traffic from Department of Transportation, didn't raise any pedestrian issues, but then I'll read you verbatim the last paragraph of this city planning letter. "The traffic analysis of the proposed station, while generally sound..." Very good job. "...does not take into consideration the development of, at 233 West Fordham," which is what Madam Chair said. "Which is interesting, because as I rebutted, when you said that we didn't have the knowledge for that, I find it interesting that an agency of the City of New York is telling us that we don't have it, when another sister agency, which everybody is talking about traffic and pedestrians that's charged with that, hasn't been made aware of this." And this letter was issued on May 31st, and I don't know if they've had any discussions with Department of Transportation. So it seems like two agencies, three, are all working independently. You're in the middle. I've got city planning on one side saying that we don't like this for a lot of erroneous reasons, because our letter is not factually correct. And now I've got DOT saying we're okay with traffic, and the silence on pedestrian, which we take the silence on pedestrian to be an acknowledgement that it's okay. But I'll go on with this paragraph. "While generally sound, does not take into consideration 233 West Fordham, which is scheduled for completion in August of this year, and will create additional pedestrian and vehicular traffic." That's for 233 West Fordham. And we agree with you. A new building is going up, sure, there'll be new people coming there. "Additionally, it does not consider the future development of inward waterfront nor the long-term development of University Heights waterfront." That's what Madam Chair said. On that point, with all due respect, I could put a 7-Eleven on this site as-of-right that could draw more cars to the site, and everybody has been so concerned about the waterfront, not one letter from, not one word from your board, not one letter from city planning has said to us that any development there would cause these same problems. You just pointed to the gas station. Nobody said that if I put the world's best-producing 7-Eleven at this location, that I could bring in more cars into the site, and that clearly can happen, and Frank is going to testify to that. "Additionally, it does not consider the future..." As I spoke to it. Now, here's the money line. "While pedestrian traffic volumes on the north side of Fordham Road today are relatively low..."
They are indeed.
"...it is expected that they will increase." Now, let's go to the word "expected." Expected is an assumption of something that's going to happen in the future based on somebody's personal beliefs. It's an idea. I expect you may deny this case. I'm hoping that everything that I'm saying right now will, you'll see a light that says, you know what? Plannick's got a point here. He could put the world's best-selling 7-Eleven in here, he could sell more Lotto tickets than anybody in the United States of America, he could have the jackpot at this location, and he could have thousands of cars, just like the cookie dough place that I mentioned, which my wife liked that I mentioned that, by the way, she thought it was very cool, the cookie dough place in the West Village that has a line down the block right now. So, the point simply being that what I'm hearing and what my clients are hearing is that everybody's concerned about, you seem to be concerned about pedestrians, but what we're asking for is certainly not the biggest traffic generator that could go onto the site. There could be a zillion as-of-right uses that could be at a higher traffic generation site. Not only that...
Can I just add, though? You're putting a convenience store in here that could easily be that 7-Eleven.
It could or could not. That's a guess.
With Lotto tickets...
That's a guess. With all due respect, that's your guess.
No, you just said 7-Eleven that has a...
It could.
Right?
Or it could be a 7-Eleven that's a dud and brings no cars. Or, just like this gas station, the owner that owns the land and the operator that's going to come in and operate a nationally-recognized franchise, Bruce Petroleum, you see that? Biggest, one of the biggest oil corporations in the world? It could be one of their dud sites. They have duds. But I don't think it'll be a dud. And I don't think it'll be a dud because of this. And this goes, this is a letter being submitted to you from Adam Good, who's the chief operating officer at Gas Etoria Oil Corporation. Speaking to the fact that they are the leaseholder, as I've spoken to you earlier, at the gas station down the block, which have been numerous hearings on this application, five as Madam Chair just mentioned, and at least three of those hearings, we've been told, why do we need another gas station? So on that note...
Yeah.
I've got two things for you about gas stations, because A, I believe we're going into a deeper issue than the board or I should really be discussing. I don't think the special permit should be predicated on a market demand for anything. I just don't. I don't think that's what the drafters of the zoning resolution intended. I don't think anybody ever thought that if I wanted to get a special permit for a gym, that I should be restricted in my special permit for a gym, because there are already 10 other gyms operating in the area, and there's enough gyms, and who needs to work out that much? So you have enough gyms already, so I don't know why any other gym needs to come on this block. And if the board denied a gym application for that, which I don't think you would, I think we could all agree that it doesn't make any sense. Here, in the record, repeated over and over again from this board, was, there's another gas station down the block, why do you need another gas station? And by the way, before we even back out of it, before we even go to that, just so we'll be reminded, this site was, as I mentioned earlier, an approval in 2002 for the same exact size building that's here right now, with more multi-product dispensers, with the design not tweaked, with all of the concerns and recommendations that you've made during this hearing to try to make it a safer site, none of that was in the original approval upon which it was approved, nor was the amount of landscaping on the site as there is right now, which was also approved, which were down to one commissioner that was at that hearing 10 years ago.
Can I go back to, so if I understand this, so that gas station that's at the end of Fordham Road before it goes to Major Deegan, according to this letter, that is planned to close?
That's planned to close.
Okay.
Same flag.
So just keep it, I'm trying to understand. In our discussions, we were told that typically gas stations act as bookends. So a flow of traffic going...
One way.
One way would typically stop at this gas station, and the flow of traffic coming...
And you know that to be the case, you drive the turn bikes, and you see them on both sides.
And we were told, therefore, we will never see the situation of a vehicle going...
A turn or something.
Going west...
Going east, making a left turn, you mean?
Right, so they would never be making a left turn, because this gas station would have, would have caught those vehicles coming in, so we only need to worry about...
That was the discussion with you. That was the discussion with you, correct. That was a layperson's discussion that we had.
This opens a completely different situation.
Right. And I'll tell you why it doesn't. I'll tell you why it doesn't. Very clearly why it doesn't. Because when we met with Department of Transportation, and they reviewed this application for all those concerns that you just raised, their analysis did not take into account the existing gas station down the block, and that that will absorb it. So Department of Transportation signed...
How do we know that?
And, additionally, Commissioners...
Name your name for the record.
Frank Filichilto with Stonefield, sorry about that. And for the record, we agreed to fully delineating the median on West Fordham Road to physically restrict left turns into the site, which is a huge mitigating factor for pedestrian incidents, such as injuries or fatalities that Eric was speaking to. The left turn, you hear it on Vision Zero all the time, you hear it on the news, left turns are a major contributor. That was something that this applicant was willing to concede to. So it can't physically happen.
And that just goes to the tone of everything, is everything is trying to look for a way that this isn't good, there's a problem, there's something bad, and that's where everybody on our side, you've got to look at it from our side, there's millions of dollars at stake, there's a site that's had a previous approval, that's been waiting for redevelopment for this exact use, it's been planned by industry professionals, there's a lot of money at stake, and it seems like every turn we make, no pun intended, because we're talking about turns, that something we're doing is not right. You ask us to landscape, we're landscaping. A lot of discussion on the traffic, and then there was a lot of discussion, why do you need a gas station? When we gave you something to tell you why, why we don't need a gas station, then we're shot back at with, what's the problem? Now you're going to make left turns? We're not trying-- We're trying to create a gas station. And we passed up this. Fueling Brooklyn's future. Fueling Brooklyn's future is another policy report, which, as we know from the discussion we just had about the city planning's 2014 report for this location, is just a policy report. It's not law. But it happens to be written by the Brooklyn Borough President, and it happens to be speaking to the diminishing amount of gas stations within the city of New York. So the other point that came up in the conversation with our clients yesterday, I say, like, I don't get it. Our lobbyists are being pressured by the state and the city to get more gas stations into the city of New York. And here we are, coming with a state-of-the-art gas station that's in a site that's allowed by a special permit, that was approved earlier, that we've worked with Department of Transportation, we've acquiesced to every concern of the board, and still, they don't like it. And nobody can understand why. And this report, although it speaks to Brooklyn, it speaks to the fact that it's-- And I'm sure the board sees this everywhere you go, because a lot of the sites that I come to you with for variances aren't previously existing gas stations. So what's happening is you're losing gas stations. Now, not all sites for gas stations are good for gas. Some are too small these days. The gas stations-- This site works well. It could produce, it's got enough parking, and Department of Transportation has said the safety is okay. I've got you on my bullets, I'm not a poet.
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
You know, it's-- The way-- I understand that your team may feel frustration, but it's not like we are sitting here each time, coming up with new reasons to object to this. A lot of the objections we've had, we've had since--
No, the main objection you've had--
Let her finish, please, for about 15 minutes. We've had a lot of objections that we have repeatedly stated over time.
Like what? Other than pedestrians? Other than pedestrians?
Let her finish.
I have been talking about the intensity of use, the provision of having diesel, how it invites truck traffic, the ability of trucks to maneuver on the site, and I've also talked about cars, and how they have to travel along the sidewalk to get to the curb cut. Now, this is not something that we just dreamed up in the last hearing. We have repeatedly talked about this. The chair has repeatedly talked about isolating this site from the surrounding sites through landscaping that should be provided on this site, and I believe that's been stated since the beginning of time. Now, in your quest to get a special permit, you have addressed some of these issues that we have brought up positively, but you've also neglected to give on some of the other issues. And so a special permit is not as-of-right. Does it mean just because I want it, hey, I want a special--
No, of course not.
Wait. I want a special permit, I get it? No. A special permit is an alternate contemplated use that with the board's oversight and giving of conditions, could be allowed to exist here. Well, the board has been raising questions, and in raising those questions and those issues, it is, we are drawing conditions up for approval, if we approve. We are not seeing, on the part of your team, a willing to give in on many of these issues, so that they could become conditions. And that's where the problem is, and that's why we're still here, five hearings in.
Right.
Well--
Do I want to just add to that? So each of those comments were given at the very beginning. On the very first hearing, we all have notes of those kinds of comments. For, if we just talk about the landscaping, I remember that in each hearing, we got four trees. Next one, we got eight trees. We kept asking for more and more, and so that's part of what slowed it down, right?
Right, of course.
An unwillingness on the part of your client, I suppose, to respond to those requests. And so it feels like it was being dragged out, because we were giving you an opportunity to respond to the requests, even though the responses should have been quicker. They should have been, we asked for it on the first hearing, and see it on the second hearing. You did reduce the number of pumps. However, we didn't think that the reduction was enough, because we keep looking at the maneuverability on the site. We have talked about from the beginning that the site is too shallow to handle both gas pumps and a convenience store, and hence, part of the concern about so many curb cuts, about, and I've been talking about from the beginning, the pedestrian circulation, and not actually agreeing with city planning's statement that it's, that that sidewalk is infrequently used, because during ballgames, it's heavily used. So it just depends on what time of year you're talking about.
We did account, by the way, so he'll speak to that in a second.
Okay, but, you know, but, and then, you know, new information about the 233 Landing Road project just added more, more, let's say, fuel to the fire. I've been, I've had trouble with this application from the beginning, and it hasn't been a secret.
No, no, you've been very straightforward with it. But we feel we've been trying to respond.
But, and one of the things I should say is, when you speak over me speaking, or the reverse, because sometimes we do the same, the video doesn't pick it up, and then we don't hear either of us. So never speak on top of the other person. Patient, wait. Okay. So, and the other part of it is, when I was standing in your place, and I heard skepticism on the part of the board who keeps asking for more and more, I would have gone back to my client to say, it's not looking good, folks, so don't expect this. So don't sign any papers and write any checks. Right? Because you know the difference between, you know well, the difference between--
No, everybody, yes, everybody knows.
--application that's shining, and one that's moving along and shining and growing, and one that's kind of struggling and looking for feet. Right?
Right. But we have a case here, and it's not our habit to disagree. Why don't I let Frank, first let Frank speak to the-- You raised the pedestrians, and you said that you think there's a lot of traffic. Frank actually went and counted, so he can give you the actual empirical pedestrian count.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you again. Frank with Stonefield again. So, you know, I don't want to overdo it here. I understand that the board has concerns over pedestrians, but we did a very, very, thorough analysis here. We took the board's request, we went out on a Saturday in May, and counted the pedestrians along our site frontage. Turned out to be 88 during the peak hour. And just to put that in a little bit of context for you, if you were to take the 88 that we counted on Saturday, and also account for the Landing Road project, and I want to point out, we did extensive research with DCP on that, to find out what was going on there. They provided us with materials that dated back to the original approval from 2007, which called for 140 units of residential and 3,000 square feet of retail. It was only recently that we found, I believe it was in 2016, that the project was, I guess, changed and became 200 beds of homeless shelter in lieu of the 3,000 square feet of retail. Regardless of how you parse that out, there's not going to be a significant change in the number of pedestrians between 3,000 square feet of retail, which is a coming-and-going type of use, and a homeless shelter, which has a completely different behavior to it. What we looked at in the future on a Saturday was 170 pedestrians. Madam Chair, you brought it up in the review session yesterday. Just to put that in context for you, the intersection that we're adjacent to, West Fordham Road and Sedgwick, sees over 300 pedestrians crossing a crosswalk in the peak hour. Over 300. And the amount of traffic that is competing with those pedestrians for turning movements is 10 times as great as the amount of traffic that we're proposing to bring into our site through our driveways. This is not a new situation that we're creating in this situation. This is a common occurrence throughout the city. The interaction of vehicles with pedestrians on a sidewalk. We have three driveways that we're proposing. We've proposed to eliminate left turns completely from all of those driveways. So the only turning movements that can interact with pedestrians are right-turn movements. Right-turn movements are the slowest type of movement. You can't make a right turn really much faster than seven or nine miles per hour. So you're talking about a very, very, very slow turning movement against a pedestrian, where there is a clear line of sight. We're not talking about any sight distance constraints, there's no blind spots, there's no walls that protrude out. You have a clear view of that sidewalk.
However, you're talking about three curb cuts, you know, this probably would be a different conversation if there was one curb cut. But you're talking about three curb cuts, 30 feet, what is it, 36 feet apart, where people are walking. So how many steps is that before you have to wait again for the next, for the car to pass? And how many steps before you have to wait again for the next car to pass? So you are actually creating sort of a hurdle for pedestrians in a way that city pedestrians are not accustomed to. We're not supposed to have so many curb cuts, one after the next, step after the next, for a use. And if this had been a 7-Eleven, for instance, maybe there'd only be one, one wider curb cut, and then you'd be done.
But Madam Chair--
So in and out, right?
It doesn't change the amount of vehicular pedestrian interaction.
Yeah, it does.
It does not.
If there's one curb cut versus three curb cuts, that's three times as many pedestrian interactions with a vehicle coming in and out and all of that stuff, right? If it was a 7-Eleven, you would just need one in and one out, and it can be the same curb cut. The reason you need so many curb cuts is because this is such a shallow site, that you can't maneuver easily on the site without those curb cuts, so you have to drive right into the dispenser, as opposed to driving around like we see on most gas stations. I mean, you can't deny that this is an extremely shallow site, which ultimately probably would do better with what city planning referred to as like a strip retail, right? Where either there's parking or there isn't parking in front of the strip retail. There can't be any parking.
Let me just explain why I disagree with you respectfully. Changing it down to one curb cut does not minimize the interaction, because it's the same volume of traffic having to get through one curb cut now. So instead of the 16--
That's because--
Instead of the 16 vehicles or so that would go into each one of the three curb cuts, you would now have roughly 50 vehicles going into one curb cut. So maybe the pedestrian has to wait longer, maybe there's more traffic coming into that curb cut, and there's a greater chance of error there. However you parse it out, you have about a car every four minutes entering each of the curb cuts on the proposed site. Every four minutes. That's a long time.
Oh, God.
If you stand out. It's a very, very long time in traffic engineering. Four minutes is very, very long. You could do a lot in four minutes. It would take you roughly six seconds to walk across the driveway, at about three and a half to four feet per second.
The difference between three and one is, everyone knows where the one is. Everyone expects that one obstruction effectively on sidewalk, and then you're done. And then the rest of the wall is clear. Right? With three, you take a few steps, and there's another place where you have to wait for cars and worry about cars. And this is a place, for example, where people are going to be coming through with their children. So now you have to worry about your children running ahead, because there are three places where a car can come, as opposed to one where you hold the hand of the child until you pass by that curb cut.
Respectfully, Madam Chair, I don't see any issue with this. This is a common occurrence throughout the city. You have roadways in this city that have refuge islands, Queens Boulevard, Bowery, Park Avenue, whatever it is, where pedestrians stop midstream to wait. It's common.
That's on the street.
This is-- Correct. This is an even lower volume area. You're talking about 16 vehicles in an hour turning over the sidewalk at a specific location, one every four minutes, compared to refuge islands on Queens Boulevard or Park Avenue, where you have thousands of vehicles passing per hour. I've worked on probably 100 7-Eleven projects throughout my career. I can tell you right now, them accepting one curb cut would probably be pretty rare at that site. You'd see at least two, by virtue of how they set up their business and circulation. And I don't think that this use is unique in terms of the site. I think if you look at any building on this site that's retail in nature with a parking lot, you'd need two curb cuts, at minimum. This site works with three, because if you look at the Easterly driveway closest to Sedgwick, it's essentially serving just Sedgwick Avenue traffic. There's no way for traffic from West Fordham Road to use it. So essentially, we've gone down to really two driveways on West Fordham Road, with what I would equate to be more of a side-street driveway with less traffic. So again, I think we've done a lot to minimize the pedestrian traffic conflicts. We've eliminated left turns completely, not just with signage, but with physical delineation that the DOT recommended and that the applicant agreed to. So I respectfully disagree. I've done this a long time, and this, to me, works.
Okay. And I think the other comment that Commissioner Otley-Brown had, about the 42 feet, something like that, of travel along the sidewalk for a truck to come onto the site, is another one. So that's not one curb cut, that is a truck traveling along the sidewalk.
So if I may address that, there was a concern about diesel fuel attracting truck traffic. This is low-flow diesel, I believe. Larry, is that correct?
That's correct.
So low-flow diesel means that if a trucker were to pull up onto this site and fuel, which he could, or she could, it would take an inordinate amount of time for that person to fuel. And they will do that once, and they will never come back. There are truck stops designated throughout the New York metropolitan area that serve high-flow diesel, which is about 30 gallons per minute, give or take. You're talking about minutes in time, as opposed to 20 or 30 minutes.
Right. You said you're not likely to attract--
Exactly.
--a 18-wheeler.
Correct.
But you are likely to attract a smaller box truck.
I think you might get your landscape pickup truck, any Volkswagen TDI that operates on diesel. Some of the European cars have diesel engines. That's the type of clientele that a use like this would attract.
Or a box truck.
I don't think so. I think box trucks normally go to a facility that serves diesel in a different way. You might get one, but we've shown that it works. In fact, the High Point plans that were submitted show the turning circulation pattern of a box truck, and show that it works.
Okay. I think we've heard--
Thank you.
As much as there is to hear, is there anybody who wants to speak on this? Yes?
Ian.
That's an Ian. Was it yes? Right? Okay.
Good afternoon. Ian Rasmussen, on behalf of the applicant. Actually, just been brought into work on this in the last 24 hours.
Oh.
Well, I was unaware that this application was particularly contentious. I will say, I reviewed the city planning communication, and as Eric said, I take issue with a lot of it. I think a lot of it is wrong, I think some of it is misguided. The notion that any time a study is done, either by the department or by, I think they referenced one by the Urban Land Institute, that that should have a sort of chilling effect of the board's consideration of special permits in the area, I think warrants a lot of concern. In addition, one of the other things that Eric asked me to look at was following the mistake about when the property had been rezoned. So this site has actually been located in a residential district with a commercial overlay since 1969, and there was a period in time between 2001 and 2008, where a few of the properties closer to the highway on the north side of West Fordham had been rezoned to C8. I believe you see there today a Dallas barbecue restaurant and a self-storage facility. That was changed back, but that does not affect the zoning of our site. All of which is to say that for almost 50 years, this site has had residential zoning with commercial overlay. So the use that the department suggested they would sort of like to see on the site, we don't see any evidence that there's a market for that. And in fact, the only two non-residential developments I can find within 1,000 feet since 2001 are both self-storage facilities, including the one that's located just to the southwest of this site. I believe city planning referenced it as the 233 West Fordham Project. There's some confusion--
It's Landing, it's not West Fordham.
No, so, yeah, there, I believe they're actually referring to two distinct projects, and that there's some mistake in their letter. The 233 Landing Project, obviously located adjacent to our site. There is another address which--
That's the storage facility.
That's the storage facility, which projects a blank street wall for some 200 or so feet.
That's been there for--
Given the opportunity, I'm more than happy to submit more into the record in the form of a study on the, say, urban design or neighborhood character issues here. I don't see a ton of reason to believe at this point that there will be large increases in pedestrian traffic, with the exception of the project that's currently under construction that obviously appears to be wrapping up soon. But the notion that someday Landing Road will connect to the waterfront when there's still, you know, eight lanes of traffic and a railroad right of way, and no shore public walkway, I mean, the only large recent development on that waterfront being an enormous self-storage facility that's about four or five times as large as the one we were just referring to on West Fordham Road, that would seem to be either, you know, wishful thinking or conjecture, so I don't see why that would be incorporated into any of the studies. Beyond that, I'll just say I found it very troubling that the department would imply that this board ought to consider market demand or saturation as far as a consideration for a special permit that, I mean, you know, because you review so many different special permits, this one has fairly cut-and-dry objective standards that I think the applicant clearly needs. I know there are other concerns this board has to make.
That's where we're, that's the 7301 concerns about the benefits to the public, you know, that's the, what's the language exactly, that the, that the conditions and safeguards opposed, the hazards and disadvantages to the community at large are outweighed by the advantages to be derived. I think that that's what a lot of this discussion is about. That is the community benefiting, or is this actually potentially a danger to the community? And I, and I'd say, you know, I personally think it's more of a danger to the community than it is an advantage to the community, and that's my personal view of it. I don't want to speak for the other commissioners, everybody votes their--
Having appeared before this board before, and being somewhat aware of your aesthetic tastes, I can understand that you're not pro-gas station.
No, it's not about aesthetics. This, in this case, it's complete, because now there's planting all the way around it, and before it was just a gas station imposing on all the surrounding yards, right? But from the start, it's been danger to the pedestrians and to drivers. Right?
I would like to, I would like the opportunity to it, and we'll see whether or not the time and resources can be allotted to it. I don't find the suggestion that gas stations are inherently dangerous to pedestrians by virtue of the fact that cars cross the sidewalk, I'd like to see that supported by some data. I know that there's been a BP station on the corner of Houston Street and Lafayette for half a century, and I don't recall--
A very large gas station.
Right, and I don't recall seeing a lot of people getting injured and killed there.
Because people come up, and then they can travel around easily on the station site, and they come off on another location.
My point is a general one, I'd like to know whether or not there is data to support the conclusion that gas stations are unduly causing pedestrian injury and--
You're the data gatherer, if you can--
I have a friend who works--
You wanted--
I have a friend who's working on Vision Zero, so I'll reach out to him.
Right, okay.
Mr. Plank asked me to add into the record that I am a certified planner and the principal of urban cartographics.
We didn't forget that. Okay. Anybody else like to speak on this? Okay, so, I think five hearings ought to do it. If you want to submit some additional information to us, you're welcome to, but I think we're going to close this. And I would like to put it on for decision for September 19th, because we do have that available. Sound good? So therefore, submission, sorry, where's my little-- the 30th of August for September 19th decision. So I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Excuse me. Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all of your time.
Thank you. Item number, I'm sorry. That's okay, go ahead. Item number 17, 25815 BZ, 2619, 2619 East 16th Street, Brooklyn. We're going to need to take a break probably after this one, though.
Hopefully, this will be quick. Jessica Rubinstein, on behalf of Eric Palatnik, PC. We attended yesterday's review session, and we heard the board ask where the assumption came from that four staff members would be working in the proposed building as we've been--
Eight staff members. Demand of four spaces, but eight--
Eight trips. Well, it was that, well, where the information came from was, our whole story until now was that, right now, the doctors are operating at their location on Kimball Street. That location has four staff members. So upon the board's recommendation at the last hearing, the parking analysis was revised to survey that location, and so what they did was, they assumed that those four staff members at the Kimball Street location would just be relocated to the proposed E16 Street location. And I think the survey found that of the four staff members, three of them drive to the site, and then it also generated a demand for one space for a patient.
Okay, but so, I get that, but I also see, and the owner's here, right? So I also see there's 4,600 square feet of what's described as use group six management space, because I understand the radiation floor, right, and exam rooms and 15 to 20 patients. But then, there's 4,600 square feet of office space, so what do four or eight workers do in 4,600 square feet? Is it all records? I mean, what is it? Actually, it's probably easier if the owner--
Can I come on?
--responds to this.
Hello, Elena Reichman.
Hi.
So as we've discussed before, I know you have so many cases, so what we were saying all along is that location right now exists and operates as a back-office operation for a practice, and the footage that you are asking about, the same people who are there now are staying there. So the only new people that are coming in would be coming in from Kimball.
Um, okay.
That's been all along.
Okay, so the, yeah, you're right. So in, so currently, in that, in the subject site, there are four people? No.
No. So four people are going to be added to the people who are there now. It's an office right now.
Right.
It's just an office right now, clerical office, and the only new people that would be coming in would be the staff from the other location and the one patient for the treatment. So this is the only thing that would be added to the location right now.
Okay, so in the 4,600 square feet, which is three floors, I believe?
Yeah.
Half three floors.
Sorry.
There's only going to be eight staff members working there?
No. No. Right now, we have people working there.
How many people?
We have up to 15, so we have like--
Okay, so maybe what wasn't clear from the study is what the parking demand is currently for the 15, maybe that, is a parking consultant here? Yeah. So maybe that's what wasn't clear. There's, it sounds like it only, it generated, there's only eight daily person trips, but what wasn't made clear is if it's a delta between the current and the proposed, and yeah, there's like a disconnect here.
Good afternoon, Hyrum Rothberg. Those trips are existing, and those trips and the parking demand are accounted for in our parking study that we did on the surrounding streets. There were no new trips that are going to occur. The only new trips that are going to occur are the people being transferred from Kimball Street to this particular site. And I want to add that because of the synergy between the 14th Street facility and 16th Street, there'll actually be a reduction in trips and in parking generation, because right now, people go to 14th Street for their doctor's appointments, then they park, they go to 14th Street, then they drive over to Kimball Street for their radiation. Here, it's going to be in one location, basically.
That's the patients. I'm talking just about the staff.
Well, so the staff, the staff, or the existing staff are there now, so that's all accounted for in everything that we did. And we do reference that on the first page at the bottom of our July 7 submission. We say that the existing staff are accounted for. The only new people coming, the new staff are the four staff coming from the Kimball Street side.
They're all, the existing staff is already using the parking spaces.
Already using, already--
So when you do your parking count, your space availability count on street--
Correct.
It's already taking into account those people using--
That's correct.
Okay, understood. Okay.
And again, we feel because Kimball Street moving, that there'll actually be a reduction in the number of trips that are going to take place in the area on the roadway.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? Any, anybody from the public want to speak on this? Okay. All right, thank you. All right then, so I think we've, we've researched this. So I think we can make a motion to close. Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to grant on condition, which I read yesterday, and the condition is, because this is very specific to this particular user, this approval on the current, is based on the current operation of this medical facility wherein the site operates as a radiation and management practice only in tandem with its principal practice at 2632 East 14th Street. Hence, the parking demand study found a demand for only four cars. So any change in ownership or in operation would mean coming back to the board to see whether the demand has changed as a result. Okay? So based on those conditions, a motion to grant. Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lunch? Sorry to-- Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, we got to take a break. Thirty minutes. Thirty minutes, so that's what? Two forty-five?[1788.83]